Good morning, everybody. It is Friday, October 17th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach. We're live in City Hall Commissioners Room, second floor. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order at exactly 2:00 PM. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We'll start off with roll call. We have a couple Commissioners absent. We'll identify everybody. Commissioner Chris Galante is absent. Commissioner Suzanne Good is absent. Commissioner Mark Saunders.
Present.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Craig Thier.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Stewart, who has laryngitis.
Here.
She's going to do, listen carefully when she leans into that microphone. And I'm Mayor Stan Mills. We don't have a full complement of the Mayor Commissioners, but we do have a quorum and we're formally able to conduct business today. I would like to thank everybody that's watching virtually. Appreciate that. And also I'd like to thank everybody that's here in person. As I mentioned right before we started, the agendas are available in the hallway out there. If you need any, let us know. And I do want to welcome everybody and remind them that the, we welcome your input and feedback on certain topics. The rules for providing public input are at the bottom of your agenda. I'd also like to make a note that the support documents, those are documents that support our agenda items. When they're presented a sufficient time in front of the agenda being published, are available electronically. Go to our cityofrehoboth.com website and look them up and you'll have the same documents in front of you that we have. Like to make a note that correspondence, there's a cutoff date for embedment in the agenda. And if you miss the deadline, we will make note of it. It's given out in hard copy to the Commissioners up here and it's embedded in the agenda after the meeting. Give us a day or two to do that. With that, I want to move right along to correspondence. We have received eight pieces of correspondence in time and they are embedded in the agenda. And there are an extra three pieces of correspondence were received after the deadline, meaning again, not enough time to embed them in the agenda in electronic version. So they have been distributed to us up here in hard copy and we'll get those, like I said earlier, we will get those embedded into the agenda. We've got two sets of minutes for approval. We've got regular meeting minutes on August 15th, 2025. We also want to approve workshop meeting held on November 6th, 2023. Now, there aren't enough here to be a quorum to solely vote on the 2023 minutes. So I need everybody to vote and that is perfectly acceptable. So are there any changes to those two sets of minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second to approve the two sets of minutes as noted. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 15th, 2025 and the workshop meeting held on November 6th, 2023. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And those two sets of minutes are approved unanimously among us up here. With that, we're going to move right along to the City Manager's Report. Lisa?
Thank you. Yes.
She's a solicitor. I'll come back to you. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We are headed into a busy week in the streets of Rehoboth Beach as preparations are underway for the Seawich Festival. In addition to the Chamber's communications about the parking changes and regulations, the city has issued social media posts and press releases and will continue to get the word out as the week goes on to avoid confusion and unnecessary tollings or tickets. We also appreciate all of the hard work being done by our city employees to prepare for an event such as this and for many others that have been happening in the city this month as October is incredibly busy for our crews between Seawich, the Jazz Festival, Bark on the Boards, Camper Hope Block Party and multiple fundraising events and walks. It takes a lot of manpower and organization to pull it off, so we're very grateful to our employees. We also weathered the storm last weekend and provided updates and alerts to the public, coordinated media requests and got the city physically prepared and cleaned up promptly. Public Works reports that the water main and repaving project is going well. On months in, the new water main is completely tied in with all service lines changed. Service lines will be tied in on Christian Street and additional concrete work next week in both areas will occur. All work next week will finish by Thursday at noon in preparation for Seawich, recommencing the following Monday. And you may have seen crews working on the Rehoboth Avenue median. They have been changing the light arms and fixtures in the median and the circle. This has been an ongoing project for a few years and Phase 1 is nearing completion. Phase 2 will be replacing the lights on the sidewalks on Rehoboth Avenue. And an $80,000 energy efficiency grant was received for this phase and will be part of the FY '27 capital budget. After discussing with local homeowners and listening to concerns of residents, the city decided to replace the Surf Avenue walkway in kind with wood instead of concrete. The cost will be roughly the same and we'll be using the same boards that we use on the boardwalk. So we listened and we'll keep that beautiful piece of the city. And finally, this month, a payment of $11,902.01 for street aid was made to Delmarva Power. And I'm here for any questions you may have.
Any questions of the City Manager? If not, thank you, Taylor. We'll move right on to the City Solicitors' Report. Lisa?
No report, ma'am.
No report. With that, we'll move on to departmental reports. We've got departmental briefings in person today. Evan, are you monitoring it or am I just going to call on Beach Patrol? Are you all able to control all your reports?
Where are the photos? I'm just going to put the photos up. Oh, the tab. I got it. Okay, great. Hi. Hi, everybody. Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, hi, guys. Listen, what a year this year for the Beach Patrol. The new building, we had, we started on time, which was outstanding, which got us in a good direction in the beginning of the summer. This year, we hired up to 80 lifeguards. We had 60 lifeguards, then we had EMTs, we have beach ambassadors and part of the staff. Of the lifeguards this year, one of the big improvements that we had is that we brought in new full-time or part-time lifeguards. These are lifeguards from Rehoboth and surrounding areas that are really experienced. So we brought in eight part-time lifeguards. They work just two days a week. A lot of them have regular jobs and then they're able to come in and work two days a week. This really helped to fill the gaps that we had. And on the weekends, we had a lot of help, so we always had plenty of people. And that work, that's been a big success for us. So that was one of the movements that we've made prior to the summer. I want to go over some of the, we don't really have any, I want to look at the, let's see here, bring it out. First of all, I want to point out a couple people and I'm going to hit the thing here for you. Whoops, that's not it.
Hey, thank you.
That's the one photo that we did, yeah, which is the full photo. Here is a picture. On the left-hand side is Charlie Bramble. He was our Rookie of the Year this year. He didn't, he's in a, did an outstanding job out of 16 people. He won the test. Goes through a grueling two-day period and he was outstanding. He's a great addition for our staff. On the right of me, I want to recognize that's Jody Johnson. He's a five-year vet. He is one of our sergeants and he won the Lifeguard of the Year. And that was voted on by all the lifeguards. It's a full 80 staff voted on it. Outstanding, did a great job. He's a true leader. He's gone through grad school right now and I'm hoping we get him back. So we might get him back next summer, which is awesome. Some of the other things I want to point out that really helped us out this year and did a great job. Our junior lifeguard program, we had 180 junior lifeguards signed up. Another really good, successful year. We have a really good director, Thad Zimmer. And Thad did an outstanding job getting it all together and running it. Things were probably this summer the best we've had it in the last five years that I've been here. It was awesome. So we're looking forward to extending that program, making it larger. The ambassadors really worked out this year for us. We had three ambassadors. They really are who the people are talking to on the beach besides the lifeguards. They're out there walking, making sure the, the city rules and regulations are being followed on the beach. And this year, we had less times, this is the least amount of times in the last four years that we've tried this, that we've had to call the police out for disorderly subjects or people that just wouldn't listen to them. It's getting less and less and I think that's attributed to the ambassadors that we have. I think they're doing a great job. They understand people, they talk, they're polite, they're professional, and it's really worked out for us. And we're going to continue to get that staff up and running and doing a good job. Competitions, if you didn't know, Rehoboth Beach Patrol was a part of the Sussex County Lifeguarding Association, which are all the lifeguarding in the state of Delaware. And they go away every year to nationals. We take about 75 of the best lifeguards, 12 being from Rehoboth Beach. And the sacrifice that's made with 12 guards leaving us in August is difficult, but the staff pulls together and all the lifeguards pull together to card the beaches and they do a great job. That group went back out and for the second year in a row, Delaware is the national champions. So an outstanding job. These kids are amazing, great athletes. Rehoboth Beach Patrol had two individual national champions and we've had two and three teams that finished in the top three. So we are, we've got some really good guards to be proud of. I want to go to now, talking about some of the, the real positives of the new building. It has given us a, and I didn't recognize it would be this good, the visibility from where you're standing up at the command center, you're able to see the entire beach. And watching that entire beach on days that it's really rough and you can see the riptides forming and watching the pro, lifeguards need to be proactive and they were very proactive this summer. As we stand and watch the, watch the riptides go, we're seeing the lifeguards react to it and doing just an outstanding job. We had this year 175 saves. That means a lifeguard is actually physically taking a person out of the surf. And that is a lot due to, we had a lot of Northeasterns this summer. If you're on the beach this summer, especially in June and July, we usually don't get those real strong northeast winds and we've had them this summer. So I, the amount of saves was truly indicative of all the weather that we had because all the other beach patrols had the same. And those saves are proactive. They're going out and getting people out of the surf before it really becomes a problem. And they do an outstanding job. And standing up in that command center and watching it is just, it's great. Secondly, the public correspondence to us was outstanding. They're able to see the building. Our first aid people were able to get the people, people were coming up asking for first aid, especially with all the jellyfish things that we had this summer that anybody that came on the beach this year knows about. Attributed to warmer water coming up from the south, it just, it just affected us. But they did an outstanding job there. They're able to see where the first aid is and we had a lot more people being able to take care of this year. Also, some of the advantages that we had is we were able to take care of so many more public needs by being back on Baltimore Avenue, back with the visibility that we have. And also, we're able to locate all of our equipment in places that we know where it is. So we weren't all tracked out all over the place. So that worked out really well for us. And it, we're looking to expand next year in the fact that this year, we just sort of moved in real quickly. Next year, we have some time to really organize what we have and getting things together. So we're real excited about that. Open up for any questions?
Do you want to go through any more slides?
No, you know, I got a, I got one more here at the bottom. And would I do this slide? I think you'll like this. This was our last day. And on the last day, that is the 21st of September. And usually, all the lifeguards are back at college, they're going back to school, the high school kids are doing their sports and we don't have anybody coming down. And in the past, we usually have about eight to 10 of us there on the last day. And as you can see, this year, we had a little bit more. And that was a nice picture at the end, I thought, that you'd like to see. We are a family. It's a great group of guards. We bring them in, we train them. It's not easy. We don't want to make it easy because that surf, Mother Nature, is not real friendly at times. So we have to take care of that. We have outstanding guards. I'm expecting about 15 to 20 new guards next year, which is usual, but we'll get them trained up. We got our leadership team coming back. Probably of the 10 people in the leadership team, we might lose about three or four, but we've got some people really ready to step up. So it's an outstanding group. Again, you'll be able to look at some of the statistics that we had this past summer. Most of them are about the same as they are in summers past. The one is, we had a lot more saves, a lot more jellyfish things and less calls to the police for disorderly subjects on the beach. It seemed to be a much better summer this year. And I, again, I think I can attribute that to our great ambassadors.
Captain, there is a set of more photographs, so just the members of the public. If you go to our website, you'll see that there's another button to click on and it's pretty much self-explanatory, but it has some statistics as well as additional photographs. Are there any Commissioners, Commissioner Gossett?
Yeah, thank you, Captain. Appreciate it. Couple questions. How many years have the junior lifeguard program been in existence?
I, it, that's a good question. For me, I've been here for five years. And we sort of, we took the program, it stopped in 2020 because of the COVID. But years passed before that. I think we've had it for around 25 years or more, if I can get the exact date for you.
Something I also ask you, if you could comment on, talking with some of the guards and what have you over the season, the alumni members of the guards seem to be quite impressive and a lot of traditions carried on. Can you just comment on the alumni group of the guards?
Absolutely. It's been great. Once we had the 100th year anniversary, it was a really chance for Rehoboth Beach Patrol to reach out and get the alumni back involved. For us and the new building, it's been outstanding. They are going to be decorating the inside of the building with old stuff from the old building that we had in the past, which Tommy Kavalewski had so many old photos up and we're going to bring Tommy's tradition into the new building. So many of the alumni are coming out to help us, which is, which is outstanding. Also, another, and that's a good point that you brought up and it gives me a point to make, we're able to bring the alumni in. Now, we're doing a lot more training in the building because we have that training room. So we're doing our AED, we're doing our first aid training and we're doing our CPR training there while the lifeguards are guarding. So that's been really good because if there's any emergencies, they can go out. And secondly, a lot of the alumni are coming up and they're asking that they want to come up and see the guards. So we have a lot of doctors. We have, I got three doctors next year lined up. They're going to come in for two hours, do a presentation talking about emergency medicine. We had the paramedics come in, they spoke for two hours about the job being a paramedic. We have the police officers coming in, talking about life in law enforcement, and we have military recruiters coming in. So it's awesome for our lifeguards to see some of the different jobs that they could get into later. And it's really building into what we set out to do is really having the Beach Patrol be in that first link to a lot of our lifeguards moving forward in life. And it brings it back to the Beach Patrol because so many of the alumni's kids are coming back to the Beach Patrol. So it's been very positive. It's working out real well.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? If not, thank you, Captain.
I'm going to hand out, I'm going to hand out some decals to everybody here. So you've got to put your Beach Patrol decal up on your car so everybody knows about the Beach Patrol. It's going to help me in recruiting.
So we can park on the beach now, is that? Thank you, Captain. With that, we'll go ahead and move along. Police, Police Department briefing is next. Officer Riddle.
Beach Patrol, Police, Parking, Public Parks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager that is joining us. I'm not Chief Banks. Chief Banks is actually, his son's getting married, so congratulations to Jordan and their family. So that's a great thing. So I'm happy to do this for him. My goal here is to efficiently give you an overview of the Police Department and what we did this summer throughout the season. And we'll start with who we are. So this is, you'll see our org chart there on the side. Same as usual, four patrol shifts, criminal investigation, school resource officer. I think the thing to highlight is we have two new officers that joined us this, this year. Cameron Linsenberger, I'm sorry, Cameron Linsen Bigler and Samantha Burns are now on FTO and they're completing their fourth week at FTO. And we just recently hired our, another officer who got a conditional offer and is going to start with us in the beginning of November. That officer is certified, so it was six weeks of FTO and by January, we should actually be fully staffed with 22 officers. So that's good news for us. It's going to give us an opportunity to do a lot of different things. So good news more moving forward. Captain Giles talked about training for the lifeguards. That's one of the big challenges for law enforcement with all the officers is education and training. Up there is 2,187 hours so far this year. The officers have attended training-wise in addition to all the patrol duties. Over 1,200 hours, that's continuing ed. So that's stuff like you see up on the board, which is like, it's a DUI training, all the different tools on their tool belt that they have to get recertified in, things like CPR and first aid. So in addition to that, you have another about 900 hours of, I'm sorry, 900 hours of recertifications and then 12, over 1,200 hours of continuing ed, which is things like leadership training, crime scene, CART, which is child abduction training. So things like that. So a lot of training going on in the Police Department moving forward. So that's one of the things that we have to handle. Talking about challenges faced this summer, nothing, nothing really new and earth-shattering challenging-wise. So what I did was I kind of took a look and you can look on the screen of 2024 and some of the things that we dealt with in 24 and how are we doing now in 25. And a lot of the challenges were seasonal related. So low recruitment numbers, how do we overcome the challenges of housing, so on and so forth. And to be honest with you, we adapted really well. We had a great summer season as far as seasonal officers were concerned. We had 16 seasonal officers, which is fully staffed. They were all very capable and handled themselves really well. So it was a good season. Most had housing already lined up and the few that, which allowed us to assist the few that did not. So it was very, it was a very good season seasonal-wise and I hope that that continues forward. And I really attribute it to the effort of some of the officers in the department going out and traveling in different areas, recruiting, reaching out, trying to spread the seasonal program with many of the people at the various colleges. And we even had some seasonal officers from the past summer doing it at their own college. They really helped us out a lot as well. So that, that, that challenge really was taken care of this year. As we know, we talked about some of the crimes, the concern in the citizens and the, a lot of it being juvenile-related. So we instituted the juvenile curfew in May and some of the reasons, so if you look at the chart up there on the screen, the juvenile arrest numbers have gone down. So in kind of taking a look at that and analyzing why, I really believe it's attributed to the number of full-time officers increasing, the number of seasonal officers increasing. And when you do that, especially when the seasonal officers are very capable, like they were this year, it allows the workload to be spread out and then we get into proactive patrol. So we started seeing officers in places where, when the, when the numbers are low, they're not. And it's, it's a true benefit and you see the numbers drop and you see the benefits from it. And as, when we get into some numbers, you're going to see how that affected the numbers and I'll try to point it out. So we talked about juvenile curfew a little bit. There's that. There's some numbers up there that I'll read out because it's kind of small. In terms of using the ordinance itself, 15 civil citations were issued for that, 10 warnings were administered. And then a lot of underage consumption type stuff that I put up there just to show that that enforcement's being done. I think the thing that was key for me in listening to the officers was is that the juveniles that were probably causing some issues kind of got the message because the officers saw that 11 o'clock, a lot of people causing those issues just started leaving the boardwalk and there was no need for enforcement. So I think that's a good thing, that the ordinance worked and it had that kind of effect. As far as police incidents are concerned, there was an increase. So there's about, we're up about 220 incidents from previous years. Once again, I'm going to contribute it to an addition of full-time officers, more seasonals. And when you have more officers and more seasonals doing stuff, associated with that is complaints. So complaints rise, officers rise, and they also have more time to be proactive and enforce laws. So that's what I attribute that to. Part one crimes, always kind of interesting to take a look at part one crimes. Not a lot, not a lot of changes, not a lot stood out as far as being drastically different from past years. The crimes that I always keep track of are things like rape and burglary. Over the last two years, we've had three sexual assaults. Don't really get into a lot of it because they involve juveniles, but I can say that the one from 2024 was recently successfully prosecuted and ended in a sentencing. And one from this year was unfounded and the second one is going to be indicted next week. So all three of those have reached a successful conclusion, which we're proud of, the fact that we can bring closure to those victims. And burglaries, always take a look at those. Three residential, two business, and a lot of burglaries that were not, were more like house left unsecured, somebody went in, took a 30-pack out of the fridge, came home, no damage, just 30 years of missing. You know? So I'll leave that where it is. And there is an increase in, in drug arrests. You'll see that on the right-hand side. I know it's a little bit tough to see. I don't know if I can blow that up. There we go. And that is 100% because more seasonals, more qualified, more driven and more proactive. So they're going out on the boardwalk. The people that we see when we go out and walk around smoking marijuana in public, those seasonals are taking care of that. They're addressing the issue. So really proud of those, those officers for that. As far as enforcement goes, increases across the board. Traffic arrest grew by over 600. Civil arrest grew by over 100. Once again, more officers, more proactive. The thing that I did find interesting looking into it was, is that traffic warnings, while the traffic arrests may have grown and are over 2,500, the warnings issued were over 3,200. So they actually do give out more warnings than they do arrests. They are pretty nice, actually. As far as civil ordinance enforcement, while we may, we may have grown 100 in civil, civil citations, they also gave out 411 warnings for that, too. So they're nice both when it comes to traffic and in person, when you run into them on the beach and on the boardwalk. So, yeah. Motor vehicle accidents, just to touch on those real quick. We had 151. A little insight into that, 134 of them were property damaged, 15 of them, 17 of them involved injuries. And to break it down a little bit more, I don't think it would be a surprise to say that 79 of them occurred on Rehoboth Avenue. So right along the main corridor. There's been a lot of discussions about State Road, Columbia Avenue and Hemloopen Avenue. I could tell you that six of them occurred on State, two on Hemloopen and zero on Columbia. So just to highlight as far as traffic accidents go. And lastly, driving under the influence remains steady, about the same number of arrests as last year. And I can tell you that four of those DUIs resulted from a motor vehicle collision. So as a police department, in addition to all the enforcement and response part of our mission, we also do a lot of events, especially this month and this upcoming week. We do a lot of extra duty when it comes to Seawich, block party, fireworks, runs, races, marathons. But in addition to that, we also do OHS initiatives with the state. So we do DUI enforcement, distracted driving, cell phone use, occupant safety, seat belts, pedestrian safety, the crosswalk enforcement. So quite a bit with the state and trying to bring education to people about those different initiatives. Bandstand concert series and farmers markets. Bandstand concert series and farmers markets, also part of our mission. Little information on the bandstand concert series, which I wanted to include was, as far as like details or the number of times an officer was assigned, it actually went from 39 in '24 to 78 in '25. And what we found was we started putting two officers up there because with the traffic, the drop offs, the Uber eats, and then just monitoring the concert itself, there's quite a few tasks to be done and we need more hands to do it so that the police presence was increased at the bandstand concerts. Community engagement, quite a bit of that as well. Various coffee with the cop, we're doing coffee with, we're doing initiative in combination with Troop Seven on Halloween, the 31st at Rise Up, coffee with captains, I believe. Faith in Blue, it just happened. Fire prevention as well. Dewey Beach Public Safety just occurred, as well as a few others that we participate in throughout the year. We're still working on accreditation, seeking accreditation. Lieutenant Mark Sweet from the Police Department is working on that. One little picture I put on here to kind of bring perspective to the accreditation project is accreditation includes for the state 107 standards that the Police Department has to meet. That is one standard on the right-hand side. So one misleading thing about accreditation is they may say 107, but one of the 107 has, I don't know, maybe nine letters. So nine parts that have to be proven the same way. So really, in my opinion, it's a lot more than 107. So I like to illustrate that when we talk about it. But 78% complete. So by Q1 of 2026, just after December, we are looking to have that complete. Current projects to include, continued take-home vehicle program, we've really put, I mean, it's complete. We've built nine vehicles this year in partnerships with Blue Tech and Roger Sign Company. Two vehicle builds in progress right now slated for, I'm told, the first week of December by Blue Tech. And at this point, by our program, all officers that are due a take-home have been issued one. So big undertaking. Thanks for the city, to the City Manager for his help and the Commissioners. Big undertaking and big thing for the Police Department. Lastly, and this is what I wanted to end with because I really wanted to use the public platform to promote this. We use a program called Frontline in the Police Department and Frontline helps us with documentation and tracking of many, many things, from resistance response to internal investigations, to FTO, to FTO for our dispatch. It's got a lot of different portals. And what we found and analyzed in Frontline after our first year of use is there was one portal that we didn't use and we turned that portal into, we traded that portal for another. So at no cost, we're able to pick up the Community Policing Connect for the community, which I'm hoping is going to be a successful initiative. Maybe we can talk about it being successful next year. But what that portal does is it allows us to utilize Frontline for five different things. And that is citizens reporting, at-risk residents, vacation watch, key holders, I'm sorry, six, pet management and bike management. And I will briefly share each one with you. So you will be able to use our website, the city's website, the police side, to go to this portal and access each one of these. Citizens reporting is simple. It farms information for you to be able to submit a report to the Police Department about a concern you may have in the community, a crime, an incident, so on and so forth. And you can just do that online with the click of a button. You can download documents, images, so on and so forth. At-risk residents, we, over the, you know, in the past, we've had families that have elderly members and dementia, Alzheimer's, and they sometimes, you know, wander off from the, from home, get lost. We come in contact with them and we really have to work to try to figure out where those people need to go to go home. And if someone in the community has a resident at their house with a situation like that, they're able to put that information in, pretty detailed actually, what they can put in. And we can go to this portal and access this information and help that person and get them back to their family in a lot less time than usual. So I'm hoping people use that as well. A vacation watch for residents that go on vacation. If you want us to keep an eye on your house while you're gone, you can go to the website, fill out this form here, submit it to us. It goes to our officers. Our officers can go out to the house and when they do, they go back into the program, look at your house. If everything's okay, they click a button that sends you an email letting you know your house has been checked. If something's wrong or they just think something may be off, like there's a car in the driveway, is that right? They can put it in the notes, you'll get it and you'll see what they had to say and you can let them know, if that, let us know if that's not, not a good thing or not correct. Key holder is the big one, especially businesses, those businesses and residential. If you have a key holder to your property, your business, that we can contact if there are any issues. You fill out that information, submit it and you can fill, we have the information to find somebody to lock your property. We do a lot of property checks in the winter time, find a lot of open doors. It would really be nice to be able to go into this database and find the information that we need to contact somebody to secure that building. So usually a big hit, pet management. If you have a dog and you live within the city, you can put your dog in our records and if we find your dog, we'll return him to you. That'll make that process a lot easier as well. We've spent, we spent a couple hours trying to return a dog home before. And then bike management, which is the same thing, just for bikes, not as exciting as dogs, but, and cats. Questions?
Commissioners, have any questions? Commissioner Gossett?
Thank you, Jimmy. It's always great information to follow up in the work that the police officers do. Any change this year in the shoplifting aspects? I mean, have you seen an increase, decrease? Any comments about that?
So we actually had that discussion, me and Communications Director Pretty had that discussion. It seems like they're going down, to be honest with you. I think that, I don't want to generalize, but the shoplifting tends to be a juvenile issue. And I really think that the juvenile incidents related to crime have really dropped off this year. I think that the curfew and the presence of the seasonals really helped with that. So I would say reduced.
And also another program I know that has been very successful is the use of Narcan. Have you, can you comment on that as to if it's increased in use or everybody is, has it available to everyone in the patrol car and what have you, just the availability?
Available. Every officer has it.
And we've also introduced it into some of the bars also?
Believe so, yes. That was two years ago, I believe, they did an initiative to do that. So much more available now than when the, you know, initiatives started for Narcan.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Captain.
Thank you, Captain. Next, 911, introduce yourself if you would.
Absolutely. For those of you that haven't met me yet, my name's Nicholas Pretty. I'm the Emergency Communications Manager for our 911 center. I'm going to start with the accomplishments that we've had so far in 2025. This year is the first summer in a very long, the first summer in a number of years that we can say we were fully staffed throughout the season. I had 12 dispatchers, three per shift, all the way from June to September. We did have one leave the end of September. He went to the Wilmington Police Department. He was picked up there and we're already in the process of filling that slot. In the beginning part of the year, we had two communication specialists that were hired previously that were, they finished their training, it takes about six months, and they were released onto a shift. And with that, we train all year round. So each communication specialist has to maintain a certain number of continuing education hours for their certifications and each one has to do at least 27, or has done 27 already this year. Earlier in the year, we upgraded our critical testing platform. We went from a locally based platform, which is they have to come in for the new candidates, take a test, and then we let them know their scores later on. Now we can send it to them. It's helped us tremendously with this hiring process we're in now. Instead of having 25 people have to come in and use one computer at different times, we can send it to them online. It's proctored by the company, so that way it's all fair and it's been validated by our dispatchers. As part of the statewide 911 system, we participate in a lot of committees and focus groups, but we're also involved in RFP that the state has this year. We are undergoing that to develop the requirements for a CAD and 911 system that has come up with the contract with it expiring. Because we were fully staffed, we were able to participate in a lot of the community events that Captain Riddle put out there, the Bandstand Fire Prevention Day, Burton Village Public Safety Day and the Dewey Beach Public Safety Day. We like to send dispatchers there and get 911 out there in the community. It helps when people call in here to know what they're going to get when they talk to an 911 operator. We are a tri-ACE accredited agency through the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch. And what that means is whenever you call in, whether it's for an ambulance, a fire, the fire department or a police officer, we have a series of questions we're going to ask you and those, all those calls are graded by our QA staff. There's a three-year accreditation cycle for those certifications. In June, we completed EFD. We're done with that one. In July, we submitted our EMD re-ACE application and it's still being reviewed. And in August, we submitted the police version of that and that review's been completed and we've passed it. We are the 17th in the world to reach that tri-ACE accreditation status. In order to get there, our QA staff and our QA process, quality assurance, has to be better than a lot of the other 911 centers out there. Fortunately Delaware is all on board with that. But we have five Qs, they review all of the 911 calls that come into the center. So far, we've reviewed over 1,300 that have come in and we by far exceed what the academy requires to maintain that accreditation. And with that, we have to hold quarterly, quarterly meetings with our Q staff to review any trending call data, develop training topics. And we also bring in the surrounding agencies, the EOC, Dewey Beach and the fire department to be a part of that process. I put these up there just to show our entire coverage area. The one on the left with the red outline is the city limits. That's where we do police, fire and EMS. And then the one on the right is that wider image. It's the Rehoboth, the wider Rehoboth area. We do fire EMS for most of that entire map area. Like Captain reported, we're seeing an overall jump in calls across the board. Some months it's 10%, July and August it was 30%. So that's a difference between 77 and an extra 666 calls that we're taking and processing throughout the year. The largest contributor to this number has been the proactive traffic stops and 911 disconnects that we take from the public. And just to recap the summer, this has been our busiest summer yet. We went all the way back to 2020. You can see the spike with COVID in 2021 and then we're back up there and exceeded that with 9,428 calls that we've taken just from May until September. Shows the same thing on the right. This just breaks it down again, from May 1st to September 30th, we processed those 9,428 calls. Inside city limits was over, over 6,000 call, I'm sorry, over 5,500 calls. And then outside of town limits was less, but more fire EMS outside of town than inside of town. And that's all I have. Any, has any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Pretty? Thank you, Nicholas.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to the Parking Department. June?
That was it. Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, thank you for having me. I'm June with the Parking Department. Just go over the 2025 parking season, the operational details. Of course, our season is May 15th through September 15th and meters are enforced from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM and permits are enforced from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. We have a total of 198 meters with 2,645 meter spaces. The total meter transactions was 289,317. And the total pay by phone transactions was 594,333 with an average of two-hour durations at the meters. Permits, continued operation and relocation for permit sales, which is at Beard Avenue, at the phone company and of course, at the Parking Department. Permit spaces are 4,196. We issue 10,155 free permits to city property owners and 1454 to business owners. We have full-time staff is myself and Frank Lloyd, the Assistant Parking Supervisor. Part-time staff in the summer, we like to start out with 12 or 14 and that went down to eight during the summer. We had eight office clerks with two of them being data entry. We had a total of four permit sales and four permit enforcement team. And the street department had four technicians. Our office hours are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the lobby and the office to be open. And from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, the lobby closes, but the office is still open to answer phone calls that might come in. The meter revenue for a three-year comparison, it should be 200, or 2023, 24, 25. And with 2025, we budgeted 80,000 for coins and we took in 67,715. For credit cards, we budgeted 3,391,000 and we took in 2,741,140. And by pay by phone, we budgeted 5,155,000 and we took in 5,122,75. As you can see, that, pretty close on the pay by phone. So our meter coin trend went down to 67,715 for the season, which we're seeing a decline Our 2025 parking season for the permit sales, we sold a total of 13,830. And you can see that the weeklies are up and the three-day weekends. And that's about it for that. And some of the signage changes that we added, we added transition sign on Christian Street telling them they're leaving the permit area and going into the metered area. We added additional head and parking only signs throughout the city. And we added signs for the EV parking at the, when they're charging, as well as the bus reserved parking spaces. Also this year, we had the QR codes in the pamphlets on our parking tickets so the people have a chance to just scan it and go right to the website to either pay or appeal the This year, the team was featured in Tetter Talks and they spent time with the City Manager and they really enjoyed it. So they got to express some of how to do Park Mobile, how to operate the parking permits, as well as enforcement. So virtual parking permits, our target rollout is winter, spring of 2027. All parking permits will transition into virtual. Temple will be for the visitor permits and reside will be for resident and business permits, free permits issued in accordance to the city code. We'd like to utilize for the LPR enforcement, the Westward Industries Go4 and Scepter. And you can see the picture of it, they're three-wheel vehicles. The radius to get around on the narrow streets of town and turn around is about nine feet, I think. Some of the challenges that we still face are unmarked driveways. Of course, there's property, windmill sidewalks, there's curves and... Of course, there's property windows, sidewalks, or curbs, and they're utilizing front lawns and city right-of-way for off-street parking spaces. Parkers are not clearly informed of on-street parking because of the stoned front lawns or other materials being used in the city right-of-way for parking. Pedestrians walk down the middle of the road. And we propose a solution as being to establish neighborhood design template for public space and marked-approved driveways. And it's going to require all vehicles to have a parking permit when parking in the city's right-of-way, even in driveway spaces, when we go virtual. And I'll let Evan take it over from here.
Sure. Thank you, June. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, members of the public. My name is Evan Miller. I'm the Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about bandstand summer concert series. The captain briefly touched on this, and so on behalf of the parking department, we wanted to touch on this as well. So back in 2024 is actually when we began closing the bandstand to vehicular traffic at 6:00 p.m. Friday, Saturday, and Sundays for the summer concert series. We are making a recommendation for you all to consider permanently closing or making that a permanent practice of closing the bandstand area only during those times, again, Friday nights, Saturday nights, and Sunday nights at 6:00 p.m. Main reason being, right now, we are operating under a provision of the code, which allows the chief of police to prohibit parking under emergency situations or public safety situations. The bandstand summer concert series was deemed certainly one of those events just due to the sheer size of the pedestrian presence that we have down there. You can see the photo at the top of the pedestrian presence that we have down there. Again, we want to make this a permanent practice only because right now, the meters still allow people to pay until 10 o'clock at night. The signage still tells people that they can park until 10 o'clock at night. So we have not updated the meters, the signage, the stickers. And so what we're relying on is the electronic message board that you see there. There's a photo at the bottom. And anybody, I think, from the police department that is working the shift down there, or anybody from the parking department, will tell you, we will talk to drivers all the time that say they never saw the sign, they didn't know, the sign was too small, or it wasn't directly in front of them and visible. And so again, we would like you all to consider making that more of a permanent practice, just not only to improve safety, but also be able to effectively communicate this to the public. There's a couple of requirements that are going to be necessary in order to make that happen. So first and foremost, we'll have to create a new parking zone. So that will allow us to create a new parking zone that allows people to pay from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Friday, Saturdays, and Sundays. Again, only during the summer, only during the concert series. So this will require the unique parking configuration, so they can only pay till 6:00. We'll utilize what's called a restricted parking code after 6:00 p.m., which that just means when somebody goes to a meter at 6:00 or after 6:00, a message will display that just says restricted parking, bandstand summer concert series. We'll need to update the signage and the stickers. We'll also put information in the parking and walking guide, and then other communications, websites, website information, lines in the sand, just to get it out there. And then we will have to amend certain sections of the city code. For example, Chapter 92, Section 69 specifies parking meter zones, specifically timeframes for which parking is acceptable. And so that will have to be a code amendment as well. So just wanted to touch on this briefly, because it was mentioned during the police department's report. We're mentioning it in our report. For future consideration, not for discussion today, we will bring this back before you all for additional discussion in November. And then, June, did you want to touch on this last slide? Just a couple examples, some fun facts. We had a pretty unique experience this summer. There's a photo on the left from Facebook of a cool vehicle that we had pull through one of the virtual, or one of the permit sale spots. I think that was on Beard Avenue. We also had an enforcement officer, obviously, who remembers as a kid riding Sandy, and so he got a picture on the mechanical horse. And then this, the picture on the right is actually sort of like a running display that we have at the parking department, which is just the history of all the parking permits. You know, every year, we try to do something a little bit different, incorporate new pictures. So if anybody has a picture that they would like to submit to the parking department for consideration, there's no formal process for that. But again, you can email parking, and we'll pick one at random. So that's all we had, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, believe it or not, there used to be a parking committee, and their job, they had one function and met once a year, by my recollection, to decide what the photograph and the colors of the things were. I don't know how we've done without them.
Right.
I would like to reiterate something, though. Evan gave a preview of an upcoming discussion about closure of the bandstand area. Right now, as you know, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday during the bandstand season. Again, that is not on the agenda today. It will be on the agenda for November 10th, workshop meeting, which begins at 9:00. So that is the point where we'll be talking about that, and that is totally separate than the discussion we'll get to later about the boardwalk and bandstand security, right? Are there any other questions by the council? Commissioner Thier?
Yeah, Mayor Frank, could please? I think more for clarification purposes, you use the term, you know, permanent closure. So just make sure you're clear on that. So I think what you're saying is, is we have been closing Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
Correct.
And that, you would make that permanent, that we would close Friday and Saturday and Sunday for bandstand events?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. More of a permanent practice is really what we're trying to do.
But again, that is not for today. That is for November 10th. Any other questions of Evan? Commissioner Saunders?
I think maybe June touched on the fact that we reduced our staff from 12 to eight, losing four, but yet our income went up. We're going to do it again this year, lose another four?
Yeah.
I was going to say, it must be. How did that happen, that we did better with less people?
Yeah, so one of the numbers that we did not touch on, because the numbers can be skewed a little bit, is the parking meter and parking permit fines. We're on track right now to meet budget, but that's sort of an ongoing collection effort because as citations become due, you know, they escalate in certain timeframes, seven days, 30 days, 60 days, et cetera. And then they go out to collections. So we have two collection agencies that we use. One is actually, T2 provides a collection service for us. T2 is the manufacturer of the pay stations, but they also provide all of our software and software support. They operate a collection service, so we send citations to them for the first year. And then after that first year, if it's uncollected, it then goes to First Collect, which is a local collection agency. We send it to First Collect because they actually report on credit history, credit reports. So of course, as people go through the collection process, they will continue to see fine revenue come in. June can correct me if I'm wrong, but we did start off with 12. We were down to eight. That was not intentional. That was just due to medical issues that come up, or personal issues that come up, or just people that say, I'm done. And so it was not intentional, so we'll continue. Obviously, we operate, especially during the summer, the busy summer season, we try to operate both vehicles, at least to have some type of overlap for at least a few hours of the day. So we're continuing to make sure that we have not only walking enforcement, but also enforcement in the vehicles themselves. So we need to make sure that we have the staff in order to conduct that enforcement. So again, just unintentional, but certainly as we evolve with new technology, we will be looking at how to appropriately staff for enforcement.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? With that, we thank you. We'll move on to Public Works Department.
Thanks, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. So here's the Public Works end of 2025 summer report. I'm going to go through the water, wastewater, and streets department, so feel free to ask questions as we go along. If you take a look at the graph showing the water that was treated, it was actually, you know, it's fairly similar over the past three years. If you take a look at July, the numbers were actually within a few hundred thousand gallons. Last year, if you remember, we had that real spike on July 5th, in which we had the water tower drop and levels drop. And we, earlier this year, implemented a voluntary request of the residents, and it was also put out to Dewey Beach as well, and our out-of-town residents, to alternate odd days of the street, irrigate one day and even the other day. And that really helped. It doesn't necessarily lower the demand much, but it evens it out. So not everyone is using the water system all at once. So these, the 5th and the 6th were the highest days of the year, which was expected. And later in the summer, we did get our interconnect completed with tide water, which is a very good thing for the resilience of our water system. So any questions on water? Okay. Again, if you take a look over the past three years, the usage really wasn't that much, that much different. It did drop off in September. And as I say on the left, it's rare we had, we see days of over 3 million gallons a day treated at our plant. The plant, the permit is for up to 3.4 million gallons a day. And last year, we had one day, I think it was July 9th, that was 3.09 million gallons a day, and the highest this year was July 5th at 2.7 million gallons a day. And we do have our belt filter press online, so we're occasionally hauling sludge to the county, but the great majority of it now, it's the cake, which had been presented before, which is the county comes, is picking up. And we are working on our own permit to be able to haul it to the landfill and not have to rely on the county for that. Any questions on wastewater?
Commissioner Godzis?
Thank you. Could you just remind us, we supply wastewater services to other communities besides the city of Rehoboth Beach. Just remind us of who those are.
Sure. We, Dewey Beach is one of the larger areas that we, excuse me, that we treat their water. Henn Open Acres and North Shores. We have a separate agreement with North Shores, and we maintain their collection system. You know, they're all the infrastructure there, but for Henn Open Acres and Dewey Beach, that is maintained by the county.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Henry.
All right, Streets Department. So if you take a look on the left, the graph of the last three years, again, it's fairly similar. If you, you know, '24 and '25 were very close, and the refuse collected in tons. And on the right, the recycled bags. Now, I should have put last year's up here because, believe it or not, this is a huge improvement from last year. We only had about 30 bags that were deemed good to recycle. So we had a lot more. A lot of it, I think, is, a couple times this year, I asked someone from Denrec to come out and work with our operators on kind of criteria for saying a bag is okay to be recycled, or it needs to be just, you know, thrown in the trash. And our, you know, our Streets Department employees, they cannot sort, they either have to make a decision of whether to, if it's recyclable or not. If they do, then we become a transfer station, and that's a whole nother can of worms, which we don't want to do. So as far as recycle yard counts, these numbers are actually very similar to last year, where we had just under 400 residents, 260 business, and I think it was 25 non-residents that were turned away last year. And that's from our recycle yard on Oyster House Road. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Henry? Thank you very much, Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, with that, actually, I'd like to take a very short break. You want to come up?
Yeah.
This is a little surprise. We'll put this under Commissioner Comments. You know, when Commissioner Shonowsky stepped down from his position, he took off. And he's here in the audience. I'd like you to come up and accept our thanks.
Well, this is unexpected.
Oh, jeez, can you talk in your shirt or not? We have a little, a little gift for him. You got, apparently, you got to be here another two terms before you get the bigger one. But this has a city seal on it. It's engraved in there. It says Edward Shonowsky, in recognition of your service and exceptional dedication to the city of Rehoboth Beach, 2019 to 2025. Congratulations.
I would have, I would have dressed my thing.
Thank you for that little pause. With that, we're going to move on to investment report. Are we going to give, has somebody given a report on that, or is that just embedded in the agenda?
It's embedded in the agenda.
All righty. So we have some things, items and documents that are embedded in the agenda. To access those, you need to go to cityrehoboth.com and look up the meeting date. You'll find the agenda as you have in hand. And if you click on the links in the blue font with underlined, you'll be able to bring up such documents as the investment report, Alderman Court Report, Building and Licensing Communication and Police Department Report for September. With that, we'll move on to board and commission reports. They are also embedded in the agenda. We're not going to take time to them. There are no committee reports yet. There'll, should be some in the next couple of months, resuming with two new committees. With that, we have community partner reports. If you notice in the agenda, the Chamber of Commerce, Rehoboth Beach Main Street, and Rehoboth Beach Public Library all have reports. They are, again, electronically embedded in the agenda, and I want to thank them for taking their time. They're very helpful and useful. And with that, we do have an oral report from the Cape and Lopen Senior Center with, on the, specifically, we asked for the status of the relocation of the center. Bernie, if you would come up to the lector.
Linda.
Linda. Linda, introduce yourself so we get you. Sorry. Linda Bonville.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Linda Bonville. I am the Executive Director of the Cape and Lopen Senior Center. December 4th, I will be with the center for 47 years. Long time. Long time. I will be filling in for Greg Murphy, who is the President of our board. He's on a well-deserved vacation. He gets vacation, I don't. But I'm just going to briefly give you an update of our new senior center. On behalf of the Cape and Lopen Senior Center... On behalf of the Cape and Lopen Senior Center, I would like to thank you for having us here today and for your attention to our plans for the future. I am pleased to publicly express our deep gratitude to the city of Rehoboth Beach for hosting the senior center for the past 45 years at our present location. In 1966, the senior center was formed. So next year, 2026, we will be celebrating our 60th anniversary. We have served thousands of members in Rehoboth and Sussex County. We could not have done it without your generosity. It is also important to say that multiple mayors, Rehoboth City Commissioners, and our present city manager, Taylor Tetter, has graciously assured us that we will not, we will have a home on Christian Street until we relocate. Isn't that great? They're not going to push us out. Assurance like this in the years of successful partnership motivate us to adapt and accelerate our plans. Our relocation was not prompted by pressures from any outside organizations. A new and expanded mission and vision statements were the primary motivators, followed closely by our members' needs for additional programs and for ample parking, especially accessible parking. A gift of land from D.L. Horton, the original developer of Canal Point, gave us the motivation to get started. The plan for the senior center is ambitious and includes room for use by the general public. The new center was originally conceived as a $18 million project, but timeline became challenging, especially from a funding standpoint. We asked our builder to provide a phased approach to build our senior center, leaving the public use facilities for another time, allowing for development of additional funds. Phase one of our senior center project is a $13 million project. $8 million is the value of the improved land we've already owned. We have spent a half million in developing site plans, acquiring renditions, and obtaining approvals and license from the Sussex County DLD. One and a quarter million have been raised in deposit in our dedicated building fund so far. The bottom line, the center has $9.75 million of a $13 million project. That's nearly 75% of the project cost. We seek 3.2 millions to build a phase one to meet the programs needed and accessibility needs of the Sussex County seniors. If we ever have a federal govern again, federal govern again, we hope to receive substantial funds or grants to get closer to our goal. We have also spoken to private founders, funders, who have pledged support when we are in our final fundraising goal. We are excited to kick off local fundraising with an event here at the convention center on November 20th. Friends of the Cape and Lopen Senior Center have organized a cabaret-style party to create buzz about the project and invite individuals, businesses, and organizations to support the move. We would be thrilled to see you all at our event. Tickets at several levels are available through our website on Zephy and also at the senior center. We also invite sponsorship. We are thrilled to announce that we have already have three five-figure event sponsors. We have also had sponsorship opportunities. That evening, we need desserts, wine, beer, and prizes for the live and silent auction. So we're asking everyone here to spread the word. We will greatly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions among the commissioners? Commissioner Saunders, who is the liaison?
I was just going to say that I appreciate everything Linda said. I came on as a liaison when I became a member of this group. And I was, went over one day, and Linda gave me a tour. And I was just amazed at how much those people do for the seniors of our community. And by the word "community," I mean not just those Rehoboth City residents, but all the way probably miles out. I would say probably the entire zip code of 19771, with very limited staff and with a very limited budget. It's absolutely amazing what they do. And if any of our members here would happen to qualify, you need to be, how old, 55?
55.
I would absolutely recommend that you consider membership. I like going over there because over there, I'm considered middle-aged. So I hang out there. So look forward to all seeing you at our event. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome. And I also would like to thank the Rehoboth Beach Police Department. This is going to make you laugh. We had an issue with our security system a few months back. I don't know if you came or not. But all these lights are blinking. Normally, Command 1 would stop the whole system, restart it. I hit the wrong command, and the police were there instantly because I thought someone was breaking in and going to murder me. But I do, but I do thank the Rehoboth Police Department and the fire company. We did have some issues there. They were there on time as well, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Linda. Next on our agenda is a public hearing for the permit of compliance request by David Neller of 59 Baltimore Avenue LLC to operate a new restaurant serving alcoholic beverages to be known as, quote, "59," unquote, pursuant to the municipal code, Chapter 215, restaurants. The restaurant will be located at 59 Baltimore Avenue. Is there a representative for, there, there? We'll call on you and have you come up to the lectern when you can. Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Lisa. You have, you're going to explain the process and list the exhibits, please.
I don't want to keep you. You can sit down for just a second. We have a few housekeeping matters first.
Sit in front, that'll be fine.
Okay, thank you all very much. I would like to do some housekeeping matters before we begin. A permit of compliance hearing is required whenever a restaurant seeks to serve alcohol. This is the time that is publicly noticed for such a hearing. It was noted in the Cape Gazette on September 30th, 2025, and the Delaware State News on October 1st, 2025. And Ann, can you confirm that residents within 200 feet were notified?
Yes.
I would like to put several documents into the record before we begin. The first is the building inspector's report. The second is the application for permit of compliance, which is dated, signed, and the fee's been paid. In addition, there's a proposed menu and floor plan. And what we intend to do today is to review the statute, and then we'll allow the building inspector to go forward with the commissioners able to ask questions. Then the applicant will go forward, again, with commissioners able to ask questions. And then there will be a public comment portion. Let me begin by citing the code, Chapter 215, Section 5. No applicant shall receive a permit of compliance or supplemental permit of compliance from the city until after a public hearing, at which hearing interested parties and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard. A permit of compliance shall not be issued to the applicant or to the Delaware Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission except by the favorable vote of a majority of the members of the city commissioners. In reaching their decision, the commissioners shall consider the following factors, including but not limited to: Number one, whether the applicant has demonstrated that the establishment's primary purpose will be that of a restaurant or dinner theater as defined in this chapter; number two, whether the establishment meets all of the city's applicable zoning and licensing provisions; number three, whether the establishment would be a detriment to the peace, order, and quiet of the neighborhood and the city; number four, whether the establishment will have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties or on the city of Rehoboth Beach, considering the impact on traffic, parking, and noise; number five, whether the applicant had made any false representation or statements to the city's employees or the commissioners in order to induce or prevent action by the city, not only in regard to the pertinent pending application under this chapter, but also in regard to the issuance of a building permit or business license for the subject establishment. We'll now turn to the building inspector's report. It's been placed in the record. Are there any further comments that you would like to make?
No more, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just, I would just like to orient ourselves real quick that this restaurant is going into the place vacated by Mark Schall. It's on the northeast corner of Baltimore and Second Street there.
That's right. Unless anybody has any questions, I'll refrain from reading the entire report into the record. I'm here to entertain any questions you may have.
Could you just confirm that it meets all the requirements?
Yes, the application meets all the requirements. All documentation has been submitted. The plan can go forward.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions?
Of Matt.
Of Matt.
Commissioner Gossett?
Thank you very much. On the project overview, your recap, which is excellent, I appreciate that. You mentioned that our outside aesthetics, due to the distance from electrical requirements, the gas tank will be placed in the alley. Can you describe for me where the alley is or what we're describing, defining as the alley?
The alley would be a sidewalk, essentially. So it's not technically an alley. It's going to be a sidewalk area. And I believe there is a small parking, sort of bigger than a sidewalk to the north of the building, which I think is potentially, possibly where the gas tanks are going to be. I'll let the applicant confirm, you know, the proper placement.
That be on the north side of the building?
I believe that would be the north side, yes, sir.
Let's finish with Matt, and then we'll go to the applicant. Any other questions?
Only question I have, yes.
Any other questions of the building inspector? If not, we'll have you, if you don't mind, step up to the lectern. Introduce yourself, if you would.
Hello, everyone. I'm David Neller, the chef and owner of 59. And we're opening up the market as well. Thank you all for having me. Thank you, Matt. So yeah, we will be, I would like to address your question first. So towards the north side of the building, we have a five-foot, one-inch space by, that connects, or just between the neighbor's property and our space, which is a sidewalk that runs along the back of the property as well, which is a three-foot space. So the north side of the building will have a fenced-in area to house where the gas tanks and the trash will be. So it'll be picked up from the Second Street side.
So let's just orient ourselves. The aqua side is the east side of your building.
Correct.
And the north side butts the residential property.
Closer to the corner of Breakers.
Right. And so that's where trash is also going to be put in that area, all right? And you'll have that screened. It's not, it's, it's in your written word, but not in the drawings, right? So there will be a screened area.
Yep, fenced off. Yep, fenced off separately. There's a, the neighbor has a fence currently there as well. So it'll just kind of match up right to theirs as well. We'll just have a door for entrance for the trash and for the gas as well.
All right. And I'd just like you to confirm that there's no dance floor. It says zero square feet.
Yep.
The reason I ask that is that sometimes businesses, restaurants change, and they change their floor plan. And to do that, you would need to come back in front of us.
Correct. No dance, no dance floor.
Very good, very good. Are there any other questions by the commissioners up here? Commissioner Saunders?
Are we correct reading that we know outdoor dining?
Correct, no outdoor dining.
Thank you.
Anything else? Can I go to the public hearing? This is a public hearing, so we would like to hear from you all. And if you favor or disfavor, just have a comment, you're welcome to say. We do have a three-minute limit. We would ask you to come to the center microphone and give your name and your relationship to the city. And we'll open for comments now. Anybody like to speak for or against, or comments? They're all here for the next topic. So you're, you're in good shape. You have anything? If not, we'll bring it, we're going to close the public hearing?
No. We're going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
New protocols. I'm learning, I'm learning. The public comment portion of the public hearing is now closed. We'll bring it back to the commissioners. Would entertain a motion or further discussion.
Mayor, if I may, make a motion to grant a restaurant permit of compliance as I find the following to be true: that the proper application for a restaurant permit of compliance has been filed, that the proper fee has been paid, that the proper notifications have been made, that all parties wishing to be heard have been heard, that the primary purpose is that of a restaurant based on their application and menu submitted, that the restaurant meets the city's applicable zoning and licensing provisions, that the restaurant would not be a deterrent to the peace, order, and quiet of the neighborhood and the city, that the restaurant will not have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties or on the city of Rehoboth Beach, considering the impact on traffic, parking, and noise, that the applicant has made no false statements to the city employees or to the commissioners. Therefore, I make a motion that the city manager issue the applicant a permit of compliance for the operation of a restaurant as so described in the application.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to authorize the city manager to issue the applicants a permit of compliance for the operation of a restaurant known as Restaurant 59, located at 59 Baltimore Avenue. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those, we, record Susan's vote as a yes. And with that, the vote is favorable unanimously among those up here, and the motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Neller. Thank you for coming. When, when are you anticipating opening, I think?
59, we'll believe. We're hoping for this winter time, so.
This winter sometime?
Yep, yep. I don't, I don't want to set a date yet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see here. All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the first item of old business, discuss and consideration regarding ClearSpace public-private partnership. As you know, September 8th, we approved a right of first refusal. On October 6th, we approved a specific agreement with ClearSpace. But I'm going to turn it over to Taylor to give more details and bring us up to speed.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past year, the city has worked closely with ClearSpace Theater Company to explore a public-private partnership that would allow them to remain in Rehoboth Beach. The Board of Commissioners has already taken several supportive actions, including adopting a resolution of support, granting that first right of refusal that you mentioned for the Christian Street property, and approving all partnership terms except for the remaining financial details. The framework that was approved at the last meeting includes the dollar-a-year subsidized land lease, demonstrating the city's strong commitment to the arts, our local economy, and cultural vitality. Today, staff recommends that the commissioners discuss and consider the remaining framework terms that we've included in the packet for the ClearSpace Board to review as they determine whether to locate in Rehoboth Beach or the city of Lewis. whether to locate in Rehoboth Beach or the city of Lewis. So, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, I will go ahead and turn it over to you now for your discussion and consideration of a path forward.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Did you have any comments you wanted to add? No. We will have an opportunity for public comment in a minute, but we'll ask the commissioners if they'd like to have any thoughts first, or you can certainly wait and let us know your thoughts after the public comment. Commissioner Saunders?
I just want to clarify. After the last meeting, we had several questions about the value of the property on Christian Street, and we do have appraisals done, and correct me if I'm wrong on these figures, but the appraisal of the land vacant, as it sits, was a little bit over $7 million, and the annual rent would have been $275,000. If you took that by 30, the value that we would receive over the 30 years would be $8,250, if we had charged full market rent or sold it for full market rent. So, just want to give those figures, because a few people had asked about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mayor Gossett?
First, let me start by saying that I'm a huge supporter of local theater. I've attended theater often and have contributed to many theaters in Washington, D.C., and also in Baltimore. I know the tangible and intangible value to a community of having a vibrant theater, but this is not about my personal interests or my personal preferences. We are here to represent the citizens of Rehoboth Beach and to ensure the well-being and quality of life in Rehoboth Beach. A new theater would certainly stimulate economic activity for our local restaurants, hotels, and retail businesses, create new job opportunities, enhance tourism, produce parking revenue, offer educational benefits for the children, and much, much more. And we have heard from many, many citizens that they value ClearSpace here and want them to stay, as do I. But this is ultimately not our decision, whether they stay in Rehoboth Beach or not. It is the decision of the ClearSpace Board. I would remind the ClearSpace Board, however, that we have acted in good faith throughout the discussions in terms, of the terms, in public. We have agreed to a deal that has many economic advantages to ClearSpace. Among them, we have offered a valuable piece of real, a piece of land for the rent of $1 per year for 30 to 50 years. They would not have to purchase this land, saving them millions of dollars. The property, as has been mentioned, assessed at $7 million. We have indicated repeatedly that we want to continue discussions about our financial terms. We have letters from and have had many personal conversations with our residents, businesses, and visitors who want to keep them here in our wonderful city of Rehoboth Beach. ClearSpace has a proven track record of attendance in Rehoboth Beach. That is the whole reason they are proposing a new and large theater here in Rehoboth Beach. Remind them also that we have three new hotels coming online, possibly 150 to 175 rooms, which means many more guests and opportunity for attendance to a walkable theater. All of those people, I say walkable, because one of our code requirements in the city of Rehoboth is that every hotel room have to have a parking space. ClearSpace, as I say, has a proven track record here, and we can only really speculate on the size of their audiences in Lewis. The Rehoboth, proposed Rehoboth Beach location is in walk, within walking distance of dozens of restaurants and other destinations. Many of the prospective donors to their capital campaign here in Rehoboth Beach have said to me that they will donate as long as they stay here. "I support hometown activity," is the comments I've heard mostly. Most importantly, after considering their offer and hearing from our citizens, we have voted twice to support and encourage ClearSpace to remain in Rehoboth Beach. We have publicly agreed to almost all of their terms, and we are actively discussing the rest. The same cannot be said of Lewis, who has taken no public action, never publicly expressed their support, and their mayor has stated that they do not intend to compete for ClearSpace to relocate to their city. I want ClearSpace to stay, and I believe that we are close to an agreement on terms that benefit both ClearSpace and the city of Rehoboth Beach. I want to continue discussions with them in public with lots of public input. That is a lot we don't yet know, including the exact footprint and the height of the new art center. We have seen massing studies and several alternatives of how it might be configured, but without formal architectural renderings, all of this is theoretical. What the parking solution will be, the city is committed to investigating the element of the project, perhaps the ever-talked-about parking garage here in Rehoboth that has been on the books for 20, 30 years. Talking about the variances that may be required, the appropriate zoning that may be required. The city has recently engaged Dover Coal Town Planners for code revisions to our master codes. They are excellent in doing other municipalities that have had these same challenges, so we have professionals at the table that can help us address these issues. Most of these issues cannot be resolved today, not until we receive a site plan and detailed architectural drawings from ClearSpace. They have said that they want our public support in order to produce these. Again, to remind everyone that they have received this twice support, which I would remind them again that they have not received from the city of Lewis. And I am ready to propose the next step in reaching a final agreement, a letter of intent, which I will outline later in my comments. As my many years with Hilton Hotels and knowing Baron Hilton, personally, actually, met him several times, his phrase always was "location, location, location," and that's really what this all boils down to. Rehoboth presents an opportunity for a walkable, knowledgeable area of theater, and I think with the addition of new hotels, there's an opportunity for greater attendance. You're doubling the size of the theater, so all of these factors come into play, in my opinion. It's not only a financial decision. There are many aspects that fall into making this decision. And let's face it, it's a real estate decision. Some people are winners, some peoples are losers, but there's always another house. So, that's my thoughts on it as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I'd like to comment after the public. Anybody else? No? With that, we'll go to the members of public. I would like to say we welcome everybody's input today and encourage all kinds of viewpoints to be shared. Please direct your comments of the issues to the table up here, to the commissioners. Please remember, this is a comment period. It's not a dialogue or a Q&amp;A session. Commissioners are not going to be answering your questions. What we'd like you to do is be recognized by myself. When you are recognized, please come forward to the center microphone here. State your name and your address and what your address or relationship to the city. Please conform to time restrictions. We have a three-minute time limit. I want to be very strict on that. There's a timer clock up here above the TV set. You can keep an eye on it yourself, and it'll ding when your time's up. We'd like to try best to manage time and the element of public comment, suggest that we avoid repetition. If you get up there and somebody in front of you said something you liked, then say ditto. We'll take that. That gives, we will give that weight, and we recognize that maybe you'll have new viewpoints you can share with us. So, these guidelines all help us hear each other clearly and work together in the best interests of the community. So, I'd like to offer that opportunity for you all to come up, and I think, I think we can guess your opinions, but we appreciate hearing them. Who's first?
Thank you.
Larry, come ahead. Just remember, so we've, we've seen a lot of new faces, but we see some faces from the last meeting, and we remember what you said. Go ahead, Larry.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Larry Richardson, city resident, Eight Silver Lane. I'd like to say ditto to everything Commissioner Gossett shared. That was extraordinary. This truly is, and in full transparency, I wrote a letter to the ClearSpace Board echoing my thoughts as a resident in the city of Rehoboth. This truly is a quality-of-life issue for us. It's why we invested significantly in building our house and building our lives in the city of Rehoboth, and I hope that all parties see the value that ClearSpace brings to this community. And it's so easy to just expect that in life, things are going to be handed to you on a silver platter. And I learned that a long time ago, that anything worth having, anything worth fighting for, it takes tremendous effort and diligence and just, you know, just keeping at it. And so, I want to thank the commissioners for everything that was shared, and I want to encourage everyone, all parties, to keep at it. This is too big to just walk away from, and I mean that for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else? Your name and address, Frank?
Yes, Frank Cooper, 96 East Lake Drive. I'll try to be brief, but I am from Rehoboth, so I'm going to ditto what Commissioner Gossett said, and I also want to ditto the thank you to the, for the six-to-one vote at the last meeting, which I was, thought made an excellent statement. I'd like to thank Commissioner Galanti, who's not here, for his idea of breaking it up and agreeing to vote on the parts that everybody could agree on now, and saving the rest for later, and for Commissioner Thier for his idea of attaching a ticket fee or add-on to recoup some of the investment that the city is making, which is a very good idea. I'm going to dig right into the dirt here. I have a real problem with what has gone on in Lewis, and I, so my, my comments are directed to the board and to ClearSpace's board, because ultimately, they're going to make this decision. And, you know, there's a noisy bunch of naysayers that, on any project, big project you do, but clearly, the majority of people in this town support ClearSpace and are willing to make major concessions, as we have, board has done. But let's talk about Mayor Morasko's cynical comments. I am really, really disappointed in the behavior of Lewis. Honestly, we have had this incredibly transparent public discussion, and the citizens of Rehoboth Beach have been well-representative and been able to make their comments like I'm doing now. And so, Mayor Morasko has denied that there was a deal or any agreement or understanding between ClearSpace, and it's pretty cynical, really. I mean, I, I think this is actually just an attempt to sow the seeds of discord between ClearSpace and the mayor and commissioners, and nothing more. There is no doubt that there is an agreement. I think we have evidence from our city attorney and our city manager that have seen it, that it is, in fact, unfortunately, cannot be discussed, or there's a secrecy agreement or whatever, so we can't see it, which puts us at a serious disadvantage. But the fact is that either the mayor of Lewis was lying when she said there wasn't an agreement, or the agreement was...
Thank you, Frank. Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Back in the corner, Tom?
Tom Gainer, a Rehoboth investor. So, my points are not to be taken as anti-ClearSpace, but Patrick's comments, I think, would be better demonstrated for their integrity if Patrick had a commitment to actually cutting regulation and cutting taxes and cutting the bureaucracy that hinders the actual economic growth in Rehoboth. This, this initiative that you're talking about, for, from your comments earlier, Commissioner Saunders, is going to cost the taxpayers upwards of about $9 million. Eight million in lost revenue for an asset of the people, plus another million dollars, plus, I don't, I, I can't follow the scheme the commissioner here is proposing. I'm not even sure it qualifies under the charter. I don't trust the city attorney, the city solicitor, to actually have an accurate view on that, based on what I've seen so far in the public meetings with her demeanor and her analytical skills. This requires so much commitment from the people of Rehoboth. It's too big for a body that doesn't have credibility managing our money so far. $250,000 to the Canal Organization that was a private, a public partnership that got sunk. You guys have a better sales job to do to make me be in any way, shape, or form, understanding your commitment to make sure that our additional money doesn't get flushed. And to the Board of ClearSpace, I think you have an obligation to better sell this initiative to the people of Rehoboth, to make sure that we have confidence that the $10 million investment that we're making in a private entity is not another boondoggle by these people at the dais, and I haven't seen that. I think ClearSpace has a, has a great opportunity. It's a great institution. It's a great contribution to Rehoboth. The PR on this is, is a mess. You guys have a better opportunity to sell the community, to be better behind it, and frankly, this thing should be a public vote. It's another opportunity for more shenanigans by a board that has no credibility with the broader people. Fifty people in this room is not the 1,500 voters that, whose voices get heard. You should put this out to a vote. You should put it to a referendum, and you should commit to financial integrity, which you guys so far have zero, zero opportunity, you know, credibility on. So, I hope that you'll think about that, and I hope ClearSpace will do a better job selling it to folks like me, to make me feel like, hey, $10 million, it's worth it for that entity that otherwise should be raising privately.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Cindy? Who's, who's on deck after her? Cindy, we'll have a gap between you and Cindy.
Hi, everybody. Cindy Lovett, Fort Canal Street. I think that the citizens have really spoken out pretty well by letters to the, the Board of ClearSpace and to our mayor and commissioners, and I do hear this million dollars of, millions of dollars of income that the city would be losing by not, you know, going forward with this project, because goodness knows what else could go in that property. Again, another hotel, no. We have enough parks. So, I hope I don't get myself in trouble here, but I think I have made it pretty obvious that I'm a huge supporter of ClearSpace, but right now, I feel like the city's package that they're offering is pretty generous. If I have it right, $7 million property for a dollar lease, forgiving 1.2 million of permitting, and removing both the current senior center and Anther Hazard. The sticking point with this, a lot of the residents that I speak to, and I think some of the commissioners, is this million dollars that's been floated. I'm hoping that perhaps ClearSpace can find a way to forego that requirement. The city could then forego this $1 to $2 per ticket thing that's being floated out there. The administrative burden to both the city and ClearSpace for doing that, I just, it's onerous. I don't know how you would do it, the amount of time you'd spend dealing with this $1 and $2 per ticket thing. How about we set instead a fixed lease price, like the Chamber does? I think they pay the city something like $35,000 a year for lease. This would not start until the theater opens its doors, and it would be a clean and simple option with the dollar amount could be negotiated. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Ma'am? And then Paul, you'll be on deck.
Hi, Liza Hodgkins, Forgotten Mile. So, I spoke last time, and so you heard my comments. I just, I'd just like everyone to put their hand up if they agree with ClearSpace coming here as a, because I know a lot of people have a lot of thoughts about it, but they're embarrassed to come up and speak, or they don't want to speak. So, can I just ask for a ditto for those who are interested in, so you just have a feel for it. Doesn't mean that they agree with everything that's going on, but thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
I didn't actually hear Patrick Gossett, by the way, so, but I probably think that I supported. My name is Paul Lovett, Fort Canal Street, and I'd like to say that the theater has been part of Rehoboth since the 1870s. The Surf House, which burned down in 1890, actually, in 1880, 1879, actually had orchestra events there. And Bill Bright Hotel, which is right where Funland is today... And Bill Bright Hotel, which is right where Funland is today, had Punch and Judy shows, puppet shows. It's just right where Funland is, okay? And Horns Pavilion, which you may know was over the beach, had a theater in it. And after that, we had the Royal Roller Rink, established on the north side of Rehoboth Avenue, and it transitioned to the Del Rio Theater, which was actually attended by some of the residents that live here in Rehoboth today. And then in the 1950s, when I was growing up, there were three movie theaters in town. And now we don't have any. And what I would like to share is, it is the, theaters are part of the cultural environment in Rehoboth, including the museum, and the library, and the Art League. And so, and actually, the theaters are part of what has made Rehoboth vibrant for 150 Please find a way to keep the theater here. It is what has made Rehoboth what it is today, which we all love. It's not a cost to the city, it's an investment in the city.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ricky will be next.
Hi, Ron Bowman, 39 Henlopen Avenue. I don't have the historical references, Paul, but I do have a past with Clear Space, and I do want to go on record as a citizen to say that I completely support the new location of Clear Space, and I hope that Clear Space stays in the city of Rehoboth. That's the one thing I have certainly have had constant throughout my time with Clear Space. And they've selected an outstanding location that is abuts commercial properties, and there's the things that, of the past, which is still in the past, let's keep it there. But I think the great thing about what they're doing right now is, problems of the past are not there. What we have is a great location, a great managing director, a great program with a winning record here in town. We're not asking for an unknown entity to come in, take over location with a $1 lease. We're looking at an entity that has given to this city, an entity that has provided great entertainment. We laugh, we cry when we go to the theater, and I hope that we can continue to do that in the city of Rehoboth. I thank all the mayor and commissioners for their support in the last couple of meetings, and I certainly second what Patrick Gossett said with his comments, as well as Cindy Lovett. And I think there's always compromise on finances, and I think more than anything, many of us here in this, not all of us, but many of us, feel strongly about Clear Space remaining in town. And I think, I'm speaking to, right now, the mayor and commissioners, but I'm hoping that the Board of Clear Space hears this message well. We want Clear Space here. I think people will support it, and I think we will fund it, and we hope that you stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Dick Byrne, if you'd come back. Go ahead, Rick.
Rick Tedrick, 310 Stokely Street. I'm here to support Clear Space to stay in the city. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for considering this, and the offer that you put on the table. And I hope that you all and the Board of Clear Space can come to some agreement, because it really is an asset to our community. Little story, I was used to going to Broadway in New York, and about 12 years ago, someone said, you ought to check out the theater here. I was like, I'm used to going to New York. Well, I ended up going, and I was, I was wowed. And every year, I get wowed even more. In fact, this summer, I think that virtually every show was sold out. And so if we, that's a testament that if we have more space, we can have more people and hopefully more sellouts. But I really would like it to stay here. We also have contributed a significant amount of money for the Capitol Campaign, and we're sponsor of the show every summer. I tell you, if it goes to Lewis, I probably wouldn't be, I would still support it, but I probably wouldn't be as involved as if it stayed in Rehoboth. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, sir. Dick, if you'd come front and center in the back and pre-stage yourself, we'll save a couple minutes.
Hi, Collins Roth, live on the boardwalk in South Rehoboth. I'm in full support of everything said about keeping Clear Space here and its importance. I have a real issue with the city giving away a million dollars of our money as a charitable donation, and I just think that's not what you should be deciding for me what to do with my money. I'll give money directly to Rehoboth, to Clear Space, maybe even more than I would give through the city this way, but I just don't think it's your role to make that decision for us. And I'd like to see, you know, perhaps the city could sponsor a fundraising drive that was the equivalent, could raise the equivalent amount of money. Secondly, I appreciated Commissioner Gossett's view of this as part of a walkable town, and I think that's a really important point. And I'd love to see the theater built in a way that it was part of a walking infrastructure for Christian Street, because it's not at the moment. It's not a nice street to walk up and down overall, I don't think. And the last thing I'd want to see is a open space parking lot with a lot of asphalt taking up a large portion of that space. So let's think about this as a classic theater that sits on the street, that has a marquee that looks like an old theater, and it contributes to walking. People park, they eat somewhere, and then they walk over to the site. And that would contribute, I think, much more to the local community than would a parking lot where people drive in, they go into the theater, they get in their car, and they drive away, and they go eat on Route 1. So let's integrate this with the community in a way, in the planning as it goes along.
Thank you. Dick? Anybody else? Joe? Lisa?
I'm Dick Byrne, 125 Canal Street. Thank you, commissioners and mayor, for getting this discussion and dialogue to this point. I ditto all of the positive supportive comments that have been made, so I will not make the same comments again. But I do want to go on record of saying that Clear Space Theater will be an economic engine for this city, as they've been for many, many years now. They have proven themselves. We know who they are. They are professional, they are smart, they are strategic in what they're doing. And if we come at it from really a fact-based, dollar-based, the city can't lose. It is a wonderful opportunity that does not come very often to invest. And this is common in small communities, large cities across the country. Thoughtful commissioners and city governments make decisions all of the time to invest in entities that will provide a huge advantage in the future. Clear Space Theater will do that. So I'm a proud season ticket holder. I was at one time on the Board of Directors for Clear Space, and I am really pleased now to be able to say I support this 100%. Thank you for your support to date.
Thank you, Dick. Rick, and then Joe, and then Lisa?
Richard Perry, 46 Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm a resident, have been for quite some time now, in the city. My comments today are not intended to reflect any organization that I am affiliated with. For full transparency, I am a board member of Clear Space, but these are my personal views. Really want to primarily address two points. One, some commenters, the last meeting and also today, have suggested that the city spending any money on a theater is inappropriate and is not permitted under your charter. To allay anyone's fears that that is the case, it's not. There is a body of case law in Delaware, and the courts in Delaware have construed municipal purpose very broadly to encompass activities that promote the general welfare of the community, which also includes its economic vitality, and the provision of the lifestyle for the community. And as things have evolved, the courts have also held that the city investing in cultural activities is covered by what is meant by the municipal purpose. So I think, to the extent that any of your considerations may be influenced by people who say you can't do this, and we even had a former mayor who suggested that. I'll point out that the former mayor signed a deed to the library in 1993, the transfer sold city property to the library for $1. So there's precedent for this already in this community, and that's not the only example. So let's get beyond that. The other thing I want to say is that Clear Space does enrich this community in so many ways that it would be a shame to lose it. And I want to thank all of you for your transparency and to let the public know that you don't have an easy job. By training, I mean, and practice, I'm a corporate attorney. I have negotiated mergers and acquisitions of multinational companies. This is not how you negotiate a deal. It's very, very hard for you to do this in public, but I commend you for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe? Joe? Lisa?
My name's Lisa Schlosser. I'm a resident here at 14 Dover Street. So my comments are based on, with my hat, as a resident, even though I am on the Board of Directors for Clear Space as well. So I want to echo a couple of things that Rick's just said. One, I really, Patrick appreciated your comments and the framing of this issue, very thoughtful, very insightful, so appreciate that. And also, I've watched this process over the past year of the city, and I just really appreciate the city being so open, transparent, and working with the community and listening about the importance of Clear Space and keeping Clear Space in town. I also wanted to address, a couple of folks are concerned about the city making the investment directly or through the lease of the land. And I did a lot of research before I joined the Board as a citizen here in Rehoboth about different cities that have public-private partnerships with performing arts institutions, and there are a lot of them. And most of those models, there's some investment from the city, whether it's a lease, whether it's a fee agreement, whether it's an initial investment in the building. So this is not unprecedented for a city to do this, and I'd encourage folks to think about it in a little bit of a different way. You know, the estimated cost for what we're going to build here, or what Clear Space is going to build here, or what the city is going to support building, is in the, you know, $30, $40 million range. And if you think about it, that is, say it's $40 million, $40 million, that's an investment in the city. It's an outside investment, private group, investing $40 million, or whatever it ends up being, that's what I understand right now. So you take that and compare it to things like, you know, the lease could yield, or the sale of the property could yield $7 million now, or $8 million in revenue over 30 years. Think about it as a $40 million investment in this city that's going to bring a cultural, probably regional, performing arts center. So I just wanted to present those facts with my citizen hat on, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Nope? Okay, you'll be last. Go ahead. Save the best for last.
Joe Fowler, Managing Director at Clear Space. I wasn't sure if I was going to be called in another context, so I just wanted to take this moment to express my gratitude to everyone on the Board of Commissioners for the work that you have been doing with Clear Space over the last year and a half now. This is hard work. It is valuable work, and sometimes things that are hard need to take some time to get there. So everyone would have loved a world where, two weeks, two months into conversation with the city, we were in a place that we'd like to be. But things sometimes take time, and I appreciate the commitment that everyone at this dais has made in that time to help us to work towards a plan that's hopefully in the best interest for everyone here in Rehoboth Beach. And I want to be sure that it's on the record that I say with, another comment was made earlier to the contrary from one of the citizens, I have full trust in the people who are sitting behind this dais today, in their work to work on behalf of the citizens of Rehoboth Beach right now, and to work on behalf of everyone who calls Rehoboth Beach home now, on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, as a visitor, whatever it may be, throughout the year. And I appreciate the process that you have worked through with us on this very much. I also want to take a moment to thank the many citizens who have taken time out of their day to be here, to write letters, to support Clear Space, and to share that support. It is a strong reminder, I think, to everyone how valued the work of the performing arts is in this community, how valuable that is to this community. I'm not here to try to convince you of anything today. You have decisions to make today yourself, that this is the place for that. You know it's currently about $1.5 million in direct economic impact to the businesses in Rehoboth right now. We know it'll grow. We know that you know that, and we know that that's weighing heavily as you consider all of this as well. So I just hope that you know that we have been working in good faith with you every step of the way, and I would like to hope that whatever the outcome of today's vote may be, as you discussed this point, that we will be able to continue to work in good faith with Rehoboth Beach on a plan forward, so that the dream that so many are invested in can come to life, not just anywhere in Sussex County, but can come to life here on Christian Street, thanks to your support. So you have a decision to make, our Board has a decision to make, but you are correct, Patrick. Ultimately, it is our Board's decision. What is decided today will help to inform that meaningfully. So whatever this body determines is the best possible terms to present, we are deeply grateful for it to help make that decision a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, everybody. I again wanted to acknowledge all the correspondence that we've received. We have some embedded in the agenda, as well as others that we received late, but we have received it up here. You know, and going over some of this correspondence, not just from the past week, but from the past month, some of the correspondence indicates that it's in our hands, that that's the next step. It's in our hands to keep it in town, and I don't really see it as that black and white. I believe we provided reasonable incentives, but of course, we know that there's another offer from another entity. I'm ready, though, to leave the decision in the hands of the Clear Space Board. I would hope Clear Space looks favorably at our offer so far, and approves it at their meeting. No doubt, Clear Space will look at the benefits in locating in downtown Rehoboth Beach. There's hundreds, hundreds more hotel rooms coming that'll be probably, possibly built before the theater does. And we know that those hotel rooms coming online in the next few years will yield more theater patrons. And there's a reciprocity there. The city will be a benefactor too, right? Because there'll be more patrons for our restaurants, more patrons for all our businesses, more patrons for, more parking revenues, so the city itself will benefit a little bit also. But that's why I was willing to vote favorably to the agreement, to the terms presented at the last meeting. I'm not comfortable right now, this minute, with offering more money at this time. I'd rather allow time to consider city funding of parking garage to complement the theater, or to put some money toward a streetscape, again, to complement the theater. I'm satisfied altogether that we've provided- I'm satisfied altogether that we provided reasonable incentives and terms that ClearSpace can use to make their decision in where to focus the relocation efforts. Just to reiterate, the agreement is a two-page agreement that we've shown publicly from the beginning. It has been modified once, I believe. And if you recall, the last meeting, we took a vote, and it was, the vote was 6-1 in favor of approving the agreement but for, four bullet points under financials. And we really didn't discuss it too clearly, but under the one bullet under financials that we did approve was that ClearSpace would pay an annual land lease of $1 a year. And I think Mark hit on it earlier, that $275,000 lease a year, that over the 50-year course of a lease, that's millions and millions of dollars if we were to do it at full price, market value, which we probably would not do. But regardless, so there are four bullet points under financials that we have not looked at. Again, I'm comfortable right now with just reaffirming what we've done and not addressing these until after the Board of ClearSpace has made their decision. And that's all I wanted to say right now. Commissioner Stewart?
Have you closed comments?
I haven't. This is not a public hearing, so—
Okay, no. Yes, it's a public hearing.
Right. I'm trying to move on, so yeah, I would like to say—
Thank you. As you know, I'm challenged with my voice. In fact, my partner said yesterday that yesterday was the best day in the 10, 12, 20 years we've been together. But I've asked Lisa to convey my comments, and they're my comments, they're not hers. So thank you, if you would.
ClearSpace Theater has played a prominent role in our community for more than two decades. Our Performing Arts Center clearly serves the public interest and aligns with the vision outlined in our comprehensive development plan. The project has a vocal base of community supporters, many of whom believe that the theater's own projection of economic and cultural impact should be sufficient justification for the city to match an offer reportedly made by Lewis, the terms of which have not been publicly disclosed. Today, we are being asked to speculate on what Lewis may have offered, and then vote on terms generous enough to persuade ClearSpace Theater to decline that offer. As commissioners, we have a fiduciary duty to all citizens to commit public resources only when it has been clearly established that doing so serves the city's needs. While public support for the project is evident, beyond that, we lack critical information. The city has not independently analyzed the theater's potential economic impact, reviewed ClearSpace's financial position, examined the details of its fundraising campaign, or assessed the viability of its business plan. These are standard components of due diligence. In most public-private partnerships, financial support, whether in the form of direct funding, grants, or waived permit fees, is formally detailed in a joint development agreement negotiated after both parties have completed their evaluations. At this point, we are being asked to make decisions without the benefit of that due diligence. For example, it is unclear whether the proposed ticket fee would fairly compensate the city or place an undue burden on ClearSpace. We are, in effect, pulling numbers out of the air. It's worth noting that the city has already made an extraordinarily generous offer to lease the land currently occupied by the Rehoboth Beach Senior Center for the construction of the new theater. We strongly support the success of this project. ClearSpace is a valuable cultural institution and a longstanding asset to our community, but without adequate information, we cannot responsibly offer additional financial incentives. Rehoboth Beach remains the better location for this theater, and the city has made a good faith offer to encourage ClearSpace to remain there. That offer stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Saunders?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I want to say, of course, I think, hopefully, everyone in the room knows that I'm a big supporter, and I expect and look forward to attending theater on Christian Street. I just want to mention that a lot of people have mentioned that we are giving them land. We're not giving them land, we're loaning them land, and it's going to be our land when we get it back in 30 years. The only problem I'm thinking about is, I don't want to get it back any sooner. You know, they're going to be opening up, putting a lot of their money into it, and they're going to be opening up a large production. It's just like opening up a business. And I think by giving them a relatively small amount of, the $250,000 a year, hopefully it's going to assure their success. And I look at it as an investment that we need to make to make sure that they are successful. So I agree with Patrick wholeheartedly that we need to work out details. We're not ready to write the check this afternoon, but I certainly think that we can go forward with it from this point on. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Thier?
Thank you, Mayor. So as I've stated numerous times over the last year, you know, I do support keeping ClearSpace in town. You know, the offer, I think, as you've heard from Mr. Saunders or Commissioner Saunders, excuse me, you know, the value of the property is $7 million, the value of the lease is $275,000 a year. It is a very generous offer. As, I'm not going to repeat what Commissioner Gossett or Commissioner Stewart have said, or even the mayor, but I do agree with their comments that at this time, it's time for ClearSpace to make a decision. You know, I hope that they will choose Rehoboth Beach. I believe that the parcel of land that is being offered for $1 a year, there's no better location, not only in the city of Rehoboth Beach, but I would argue that there's no better location than that in the entire Sussex County. I also believe that, from a business continuity perspective, staying in town, you know, you have a footprint here, you have a following here, as has been mentioned by some of the other fellow commissioners, there are more hotels coming into town. There's a significant, there is risk for you to move out. So staying here, I hope you're considering the business continuity risk in this decision. I think, as has been mentioned, you know, once you choose us, then there are probably, there potentially are some additional discussions that we could have based on what's presented. I've mentioned a ticket fee. I'll stand by the ticket fee. And just so you understand philosophically, one of the reasons why I presented that ticket fee is because I think there have to be limits to what the residents of the city contribute to this process. So it becomes an investment, and there's a way for the city to recoup those funds, whether it's through a ticket fee or some other form or fashion. Those things, for me, have to be discussed and have to be considered. So again, I, you know, I think I, you know, align with Commissioner Saunders and Commissioner Stewart that we are at the point, as the mayor, we're at the point now where I think we've made a very generous offer. It's time for ClearSpace to make a decision, and I hope the decision is all-encompassing and that you will stay in Rehoboth Beach. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Gossett?
Thank you. Just a perspective here, a little bit, the term sheet that we have been referring to, and it's been renamed and what have you, but of those, there were 20 points on that document. We've accepted and agreed to 16 of those 20. That's 80%. That's a win, in my mind. And, you know, we're talking about a partnership here. If this was a true partnership that we entered into for the next 30 to 50 years, there are major financial implications on both sides. And I really believe, as has been mentioned up here, that we need to do further due diligence on our behalf, your behalf. Other business deals that I've been involved with that are somewhat similar to this in a sense, but you always look at financial stability, and that's a pro forma business plan, a fundraising plan, a review of financial statements. These are just documents that begin to explore the real credibility of, if you will, both sides of the agreement. So I think those, to continue this discussion, that's what needs to happen. But prior to that, you know, we need a commitment from the ClearSpace board that we're committed to you, and then we can make those other commitments. Not saying it's all going to happen, you know, it's, life is compromised. But I believe the sticking points, if you want to call it, in the financials can really be worked through. Again, we, this has got to be a mutual advantageous agreement for both parties, and not just a fast agreement. You know, we've learned from our past projects here about rushing into commitments, the doc, perhaps, some other things. So we really don't want to repeat those experiences. We want to learn from those experiences and to enter into this agreement wisely and be sure both parties have anticipated future developments. You know, as has been mentioned, it's probably three to five years that this really building will put the first shovel in the ground. So a lot can happen between that time. But what shouldn't, what shouldn't happen is, or what should happen, I should say, is the agreement that we are both committed to this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Taylor, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, from what I'm hearing from the group, I would recommend someone making a motion to direct the city manager to draft and execute a letter of intent containing the 16 of the 20 points that were affirmed at the last meeting.
So moved? Anybody?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett, and a second by Commissioner Craig Thier to direct the city manager to draft and execute a letter of intent reaffirming the 16, the points approved at the last meeting of October 6th. Is that all right? So basically, it's reaffirming our vote at the last meeting. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Saunders?
I see no harm, so I would vote yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
I vote aye, and this is the first step of the next sets of discussion. This is the first step of many steps.
Commissioner Thier?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Well, that sounds strained. And the mayor votes aye, too. And with that, I think we're all hopeful that the board chooses us based on what we've agreed to so far. Thank you very much, and that's the end of this topic, right? We'll take about a two-minute, want to go right into it? We're not going to take a break, but if anybody that's not interested in the next would skedaddle. Here we go. All righty, next of old business is, consider authorizing a contract to facilitate a security program for Rehoboth Avenue at the bandstand and boardwalk. Evan Miller?
Thank you, Mayor.
Can you?
Just one second.
Evan, can you ask them to move downstairs? I might have to wear my heavy coat next time. I'm freezing. Aren't you freezing?
All right. Good afternoon. There are two documents included in the agenda for this topic, and this topic is, consider authorizing a contract to facilitate a security program for Rehoboth Avenue at the bandstand and boardwalk. The first attachment is a presentation which was given October 6th at the workshop. The presentation is identical to that presentation, so nothing has changed. I've just updated the date. I'm happy to go through that presentation again, but again, I'd encourage anybody that has not had an opportunity to look through that presentation to please do so. They can find it in this agenda, but also, again, October 6th. The second attachment is the proposal or the contract that we're asking you all to consider today. This is a proposal from Gibraltar Perimeter Security for the pedestrian safety improvements at Rehoboth Avenue, specifically the entrance to the bandstand at the end of Rehoboth Avenue and at the end of Rehoboth Avenue onto the boardwalk. So you'll see in the description, it's broken out into two different areas. One is the bandstand area, so again, installing roughly 32 shallow-mounted fixed bollards. There, at the bandstand location, the bollards would be located across the sidewalk on the north side and the south side, and then also in front of the restroom facility to not only protect pedestrians that are there waiting to use the restroom, but also anybody who's waiting at the bus stop, also any pedestrians crossing from one side of the street to the other. The second component in that description is the boardwalk improvements. So again, these are fixed, standard bollards, 35 each at the boardwalk. And then we also propose to install two swing arm gates to ensure that we can still maintain vehicular access when necessary, mainly first responders and our streets crews when they're out there collecting refuse. So the proposal, again, is in the agenda. This is for your consideration. The total proposal cost is $422,677. The urgency for signing this proposal or executing this contract is so that we can start the manufacturing process. Products are manufactured in Texas, and so it's going to take some time to manufacture those bollards and then also have them shipped here so that they're ready for the installation contractor to begin installation, so we can meet our target completion date of May 15th, just before the summer season, next summer season. So again, just to recap, the proposal for you to consider is what's on the screen, $422,677. Of that, $211,338.50, 50% of that would be spent this current fiscal year. The remainder would be spent after April 1st, next fiscal year, so we will ensure that that's included in the proposed FY '27 budget for your consideration. I think that's all I have to present. There is a second component of this, which will be forthcoming in November, and that is consideration of the contract for actual installation of those bollards. That's all I have to report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Evan, would you, would you please advise us if you had any talks with the Chamber or Main Street about this?
Yeah.
You know, who did you reach out to? That's, and then I have another follow-up question.
Absolutely. So both the chief, Captain Riddle, and myself sat down with Dan at Main Street, and then we sat down with Kate at the Chamber, because Carol was unavailable the day that we had met with them. We talked through our plan here for the pedestrian safety improvements. Both were very supportive of it. I think both understand the need, especially during the summer concert series, to really be able to physically secure that area due to the pedestrian presence. Again, both groups very supportive of this effort, and so we did have those conversations. I actually did meet again with Kate today, just to congratulate her on the recent news, and we did talk about this again. She did not mention that anybody's contacted her in objection or anything like that to the improvements.
So do we know if Kate or Dan reached out to any businesses, or?
I do not know.
Don't know that?
Don't know.
Okay. And then I'd like to anticipate a question, if I could. If you could, there's been concern about delivery and pickup in that area.
Yeah.
And if you could advise what was done in the previous years?
Of course.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, happy to do that. And again, Captain might be able to convey a little bit more information than I could, but Rehoboth Avenue, as it kind of turns around at the restroom facility, does the U-turn, it's technically two lanes with a little bit of a pull-off for a bus stop. What the police department does during the summer concerts is they actually create three lanes, one of those lanes, four lanes. We create four lanes. That ensures— That ensures that we can continue to allow two lanes of traffic to turn around at the end of Rehoboth Avenue, one lane so that the bus can still stop and pick people up, drop them off, and then the other is dedicated more so for people who are dropping somebody off, they have a disability, they have older visitors that again, just need to get as close to the bandstand as possible, accommodates Uber drivers, Lyft drivers, anybody who is coming to pick up food. Really, we've tried to accommodate those folks as much as possible, knowing that, again, we're trying to eliminate any vehicles in that area just due to the sheer pedestrian size, or the size of the pedestrians that we have down there. As you heard from the captain's report earlier, a lot of vehicle crashes and incidents that we see occur on Rehoboth Avenue. Also, we are dedicating two police officers to this event, just because of the size of it. So, again, we've put a lot of thought into these improvements, especially what we can do to accommodate the businesses down there during these temporary closures. And so, we will continue to maintain that practice of providing this access, these additional travel lanes, doing some traffic changes during this time to accommodate those different uses.
And how are we getting the word out that Ubers, or can an individual even do the same thing, park there and say, "I'm running to go fish"?
I'll, I'll let the captain address that if I don't answer it correctly, but usually what happens is somebody pulls up, and again, we have two officers down there that are stationed, they'll pull up and they'll want to talk to the officer, "Hey, I'm here to just drop somebody off," or "I'm here to pick up food," or "I'm dropping off, picking up food," and they'll tell them where to park, correct?
Yeah.
I just, I just learned about this yesterday, and that, that excites me, that there's that opportunity there. But, but I question, how do people know? Now, well Lyft driver, I imagine, once they learn the first time, well then...
You got it. So, I didn't, like, focus on it a lot in the presentation I did before, but that's what all the additional slots were for, for the, the manpower is, because we realized in the first year that we did it, that there's a lot of contact with the drivers, because we didn't even realize about the Uber Eats until we started doing it, and the combination of handicap drop off plus buses, trying to fit it all in there. But the answer to your question is, when we use the signboard that you see in the pictures that advises about no, no parking, we bring that signboard out and use it to direct drop off and then traffic. So, as you approach the bandstand, the signboard has an arrow that says if you're dropping off this way, if you're gonna, you know, if you're just trying to, if you're running traffic to the left. So, and the Uber Eats question, they just know now. I mean, word passed on, they've figured it out, and it works out pretty good.
Okay, okay. Anything else for, we'll go to?
No, actually, there was one more thing. We did put this topic out on Reach Out Rehoboth. We received three comments, and we can embed them in the agenda after the fact. We wanted to wait until the meeting today, just to make sure there weren't any comments coming in last minute. More so, the three comments relate to why the urgency, who decided that Rehoboth needs to become a fortress. Also, somebody wanted us to elaborate a little bit more on the lift bars or swing gates, why are they necessary for a vehicle coming off the boardwalk? It's actually kind of both vehicles going on and off the boardwalk, again, just for our first responders, but also the streets crews. But again, we'll get these comments embedded in the agenda, but more so, they revolved around sort of questioning the need for the improvements.
Okay, so rea, if you would, reiterate your goal for us today. What is your objective? And then we'll come to us, and then we'll go to Allison and the public.
Sure. So, the goal today is to have you all consider awarding this proposal or this contract to Gibraltar for the manufacturing of the bollards, but also the swing arm gates that are proposed at the bandstand and the boardwalk. Once this contract is authorized, 50% of the $422,677 would pay this, would be paid this fiscal year. The remainder would be budgeted in next fiscal year's budget and presented to you all in January when we begin our budget meetings.
And Mayor, I do want to add that the urgency of approving this contract today, if it's not approved today, it would not be ready for the summer season.
Right. Any comments up here? Commissioner Gos...
Not at this time.
Allison, or we'll, we'll go to the members of the public. Allison, we'll let you go first. Would you like to come up to the microphone here? Just state, I know who you are, but if you would state your name and what you do.
Hi, everyone. So, I'm Allison Blythe. I am, I've been in Rehoboth, been a resident in Rehoboth since 1988, and I've been running biz, running restaurants since that time. My first one was La La Land, then I had Pan Asian Bistro Yum Yum, and I own and operate Go Fish. I'm coming up to my 25th year. I'm also the property owner down there at 24 Rehoboth Avenue. So, I'm basically here today because a week ago, I read in the Cape Gazette online about this, this project going on, which I was completely unaware of. Anyway, I walked around the circle, I call it the circle, of all the businesses, and I talked to everyone and said, "Hey, has anybody heard about that they're going to put, they're proposing to put bollards in a swing arm up here?" Not one person had heard about it. I'm a member of Main Street, I have been for years, a member of the chamber for probably, well, since 88, actually. I didn't hear anything from them, and nobody gave me feedback that they had spoken to anyone, except earlier in the week when, when I spoke to Chip, he said he would reach out to Carol. Anyway, with last week's weather being so bad, I couldn't get to everybody. But anyway, in the course of the last week, I've got, I've got now 20 businesses. I sent the petition that I put together, which I hope you all saw. I gave it to Anne yesterday, I sent it to Anne yesterday.
We received it.
So, I picked up a couple more signatures from them. One was from Thrashers today. Anyway, basically, you know, this concert series, I've been, I've been down there like 25 years, so the concert series, you know, and I have, can't impress upon you enough how much we all suffer. I, I asked everybody, even Ibach's, Tom at Ibach's said, "I'm not selling popcorn to these people." If you can't sell popcorn to someone watching a show, we have ice cream, we have popcorn, we have french fries, we have fish and chips, we have, we have the standard, bog standard, snacky food. If we can't sell this, what can we sell? And the truth of the matter is, we are choked off with not just 40 parking spaces, but business in general. These people, for the most part, are not buying food, they're not buying drinks, they're certainly not buying t-shirts, jewelry, or knickknacks. I mean, people are paying vast rents down there, and the three busy nights of the year between Memorial Day and Labor Day is killing us down there. So, I know, I wanted more people to be here today, and a few were going to show up, a few had to, had to leave. Sorry, can I just take a little more time?
I'd like you to continue.
Because I do want to talk about the Uber as well. Anyway, it was just difficult Friday afternoon, but, so that's the concert series. They're sitting in the road, they're bringing their chairs, they're blocking frontages from people's businesses, they have to move, move their chairs. I mean, they're, and then they line up at the bus stop after, and it goes all the way down the boardwalk, and it, it blocks our businesses. They're, they're just not, I mean, I get one or two sales. I even have waiters that don't want to work on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday anymore because they're not making money, and the Uber...
Allison, Allison, we need you to come back to the bollards.
Sorry, okay, so also, the Uber, the four lane thing is, is clearly not marked. I took it upon myself to go, because I've spoken to the chief police about this. Years ago, I spoke to him. I said, "Hey, why are we cut off at 6 o'clock for an 8 o'clock show?" So, this was 10 years ago, maybe? He said, "Okay, well, we'll cut it off at 7:00." I said, "Great, I can get an early, early dinner in," you know? And it rolled along like that for years. And by the way, the concert series used to be only Saturday and Sunday, not Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, here we are, another day of the week. Anyway, I realized, look, safety is number one down there. It's getting busier. I feel it honestly, it should be perhaps moved somewhere, but in any event, we pay a lot of money for Uber, we're all trying to pivot our businesses, the restaurants anyway, into the delivery. It's, it's the way the trends are going anyway. But I went out and spoke to some police, I've got actually some, some names of people of the police, and they said, "No, people can't stop here." And I said, "Well, Chief Banks said they can, they can stop here and come and pick up." And if somebody's picking up from me, and then somebody wants to pick up from Louis, they've got to walk all the way around to Louis. I mean, how much space do we have? Obviously, you know, we've, we don't have Uber cars lining up to pick up from us. We don't, we don't have that business, and we've got, you know, we, we're just, it's, I mean, the, probably the general consensus is we're killing it down there when these events happen, but the truth is, it's killing us. And we just ask, but the main thing is, the main thing that we are really upset about is putting bollards on the sidewalk. So, I, here on Rehoboth Avenue, right there, there, there's eight here on this side and eight on that side. I mean, we, we even understand putting them across here, or even putting them across the boardwalk, but this is another deterrent. People are going to drive up the avenue and say, "Oh, I guess this is where we drive around, we shouldn't really be going in here." It's just, it's a tripping hazard. The times I go out in the summertime with bags of ice for people that trip on those steep curbs there, they don't expect to have to lift their feet that high. I mean, people walk along like this, it's crowded. That's a tripping hazard. That's a safety hazard right there. I mean, my, my solution is put just a low-level planter there. I mean, for a car to be able to get on there, they have to go through cars, go through a steep curb, it doesn't make sense to put these bollards on the boardwalk. And this is really what we're upset about.
Thank, thank.
These, these two here.
Thank you, Allison.
We just feel it's another, it's another barrier to our businesses, but collectively, we, we would like to work on this together. And if nothing else, I think this project, you know, we need, we need, you know, you guys to understand, we're going to start banding together, and we should be aware of this. We should, no, nobody was aware of it.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you very much.
Carolyn, and then Tom?
Carolyn Deefendorfer, City Resident. As somebody who goes up to the bandstand for most of the concerts, I would say pedestrian safety is extremely important. I know several years ago, my husband was one of the ones who started this whole thing. And I will say that the, the, the lanes that were created, I could tell a difference this year. I felt much safer, there were less cars in, so I think anything you can do to improve pedestrian safety is a good thing. We don't want something bad to happen before we do something, we have to be proactive. I do feel for the businesses. I think if we can do some kind of campaign to make sure that people understand that they, there is a method for picking up food, that to me is just communication. But I do, I enjoy the bandstand activities. I know a lot of people that come in from outside of town. There's a couple that we've seen there for years, that they come in Friday and Saturday, almost every time there's a bandstand concert, they eat dinner first, and then they go to it and find their way home. So, I do think it's a good thing, and I think we need to increase pedestrian safety in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Tom?
Tom Gainer, investor in Rehoboth. So, I hope Chris, Chris is listening. The most interesting thing I've heard today was Susan's comments about the lack of diligence, the negligence in advance of votes, the lack of information that is available upon decision-making, and that should be repeated, and I hope everybody listens to your comments on the prior topic because it's applicable to this topic. There is no emergency. If you don't make the decision today, and it's not in place on May 15th, so what? This is a million dollar, another million dollar boondoggle, and to summarize, no one was contacted at the business level. And the mayor invoked a impuded endorsement of the city employee who's sponsoring this, asking about, "Were two people contacted, and what was their reaction?" "Oh, they were for it." Well, did they initiate it, was the better question. They did not, is the better answer to here. The business community didn't initiate it. They don't want it. They're the ones down there, they're the ones whose customers are at stake for their safety. And you guys don't have the information to do the diligence in support of Susan's comments earlier, and you're going to be rushed because Mr. Teder says, "The decision's got to be made today in order for a million dollars to be spent and in place before May 15th." You wonder why people are frustrated with you? You wonder why people perceive that every year you imagine $5 million of additional stupid spending? This is a perfect example. No emergency, no communication, no solicitation of the important feedback that's necessary, no due diligence. It's negligent, and it's a breach of your fiduciary duty. And as a lawyer, you would know that. I hope you guys do not endorse this on the basis of a fake emergency and a fake deadline.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Colin? Is it Colin?
Collins. Collins, yes.
C.O.L.L.I.N.S.?
Correct.
Very good.
Yes, sorry, just, it, very similar point, sorry.
Put your name and address again.
Resident of Rehoboth, on the boardwalk in South Rehoboth. Just, just quickly, this also, again, project planning here, I didn't hear a mention of what this has cost to actually install. I know there was a million dollar number thrown around, but this seems to me a recipe that you rush to order these things, you get them here, and then you can't find anybody to install them at the price that you, you wanted to here, and this is part of diligence, it's part of creating a plan, it's part of, you know, you know, project planning this in the right way, but it seems you opened yourself up to a disaster to buy a bunch of equipment without knowing how much it's actually going to cost you to install it, so...
Thank you. I can, I guess, answer that. So, October 16th, we, in the presentation, said that the total cost for manufacturing and the installation was 1.1 million. So, before you is the products, $422,677, installation, $622,000. And again, that will be before you in November.
November 10?
Yes.
10th, yeah. Commissioner Saunders?
I just want to make note, if I'm correct, the folks from the Henlopen Hotel condominiums also objected to the gates, but I think that you were good enough to talk to them and agree that there might be some small changes still available even at this late date. And I understand you're going to meet with them and see if any of them that they're suggesting would be feasible. So, I just want the public to know, it's not necessarily written in stone exactly where every bollard's going to go, or whatever color every gate's going to be.
Tom, Tom?
Yes, I am. That's all. Thank you, and I would want to thank, thank you Evan for making those opportunities for people that may be affected to, to weigh in.
Anything else from the commissioners, or any further discussion, or would somebody like to make a motion? If you'd like to make a motion, do you need to confer with Evan once more?
Mayor, I'd like... You have a comment? I'm sorry.
No, I don't have a comment.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract before us with Gibraltar in the amount of $422,677 for the installation of bollard program along the bandstand and boardwalk. Thank you.
Second it? Are you okay with that, Evan?
Yeah, it's fine.
Wording of that?
Just to clarify, not for installation, this is just the products themselves, so manufacturing.
Purchase of products, yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett, and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to award Jill Gibraltar the contract for the providing materials and purchase of the bollard material for boardwalk safety program. Are you okay with that, everybody? With that, is there any further discussion? We'll let you, we'll let you know that Chip Hearn did come in this earlier, and, and he also expressed a desire for a delay. I, I am hesitant to do that. I know, but we, there's discussion.
Oh, okay.
I, I see a need for it, and more immediate needed, but, Patrick?
Mayor, if I may just comment on this, the bandstand concerts have been taking place for over 60 years. This prob, aspect of a bollard program has in effect been in place for the past two seasons, where we have closed parking on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, beginning at 6:00 PM to midnight. Because of the concern of cars backing into the public, people do put their... Because of the concern of cars backing into the public, people do put their lawn chairs in the street to listen to the concerts and what have you. It has become a very problematic aspect of crowd control, potential individuals being hit by a car, run over by a car. I, I would ask Captain Riddle, I know you've been involved in this for several years and a lot of the information provided early on was from work that you had done. And if you'd care to expand on that a little bit, I certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, so.
Don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know you're very well versed in this.
As, as part of work as a master's degree, I started, I did a security assessment for the bandstand. And common logic tells you if you're going to put that many people in one area at one time. As a city, my opinion was, and what I brought forth was, that we have an obligation to make sure that people are safe and secure when they come to those concerts. And the ideas were brought forth, a lot of them researched and developed by Evan, and they were presented to the commissioners for consideration as to how we could do that the best possible way, the best feasible way. And I think that this is it. And I understand the impact that it has and I too sympathize with that. But if we're going to do that, we have an obligation to protect people and provide public safety.
Thank you.
I got takeout dinner from.
I just want to reiterate what we're upset about is the bollards on the sidewalk.
Right. Well, and.
These, this is what we're upset about.
I, I understand.
That's unnecessary. You put them here, put them across the boardwalk.
All right.
But this is going to hurt our businesses.
We, we, we understand, I understand, I understand. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Again, the motion is to award contract to Gibraltar for the purchase of materials for the, for the bollards for the boardwalk safety program. All those in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the motion is carried. November 10th is the next meeting, we'll be talking about the, the frequency of the close off of the circle. So put that on your calendar too. November, November 10th workshop, it begins at 9:00 AM.
When is that?
November 10th. That's when we'll be discussing how often the bandstand area is closed off. Right now, it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and the recommendation was that it be closed off with greater frequency. All righty, thank you very much. Thank you, Allison. Thank you, everybody. With that, our next bit of business is discuss and consider criteria for the establishment of a task force seeking to acquire historical designations for the boardwalk, including appointment of Mayor Sam Mills as chair. There's this agenda item report in front of you. Are there any questions? You know, we had our last meeting with the boardwalk committee before we sunset, we had three people from the state historic group and they would be helping on this task, but they're the ones making the decision. So that would create a conflict, so they would not be asked to join the task force, but they would be involved in it. As far as members from the Village Improvement Association, I would probably ask, you know, give some invitations to some of the ladies that have been helping us. Rehoboth Beach Historical Society, I would send an invitation to Heidi. And then we'll use a task force membership application to seek membership from the local community. If there's no questions, I would ask for a motion to establish the Rehoboth Beach Boardwalk Historic Designation Task Force with a structure articulated in this agenda item report.
Sorry, again, Collins, boardwalk resident, be great to have a boardwalk resident on this.
Sure.
Particularly how it affects any property rights that run up to the boardwalk, et cetera, et cetera.
It'll be fine, keep in mind, Colin, Collins. No motion? We'll move on to the next thing, I guess.
Well, can we go back?
Yeah.
I think Patrick and I were looking at each other, I think he was going to make motion, I think he thought I was going to make motion. I'd like to make a motion, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
That we go ahead and recommend that a task force be formed for the purpose of looking into historic designation of the boardwalk. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mark Saunders and a second by Commissioner Patrick Gossett to establish a task force to look into the historic designation of the boardwalk. Is that satisfactory?
That's perfect.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, is there any more public want to say anything? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, and the motion is carried. Thank you very much. We'll move right on to the next item. Consider awarding a contract to Ronca for Phase Four improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. Henry's going to get up there. If you recall, we had a, this introduced to us at a previous meeting, so it's not new.
Good afternoon again, mayor commissioners, members of the public. So again, as you know, I was up here with Stephen from GHD a week, a week and a half ago. It's the same presentation as last time, we're not going to go in as much detail on it and, but we will hit every slide and please feel free to ask questions as we go. Oh, before I bring Stephen up, I asked Paul Hegnut and Sam Thorp, Paul's the department head for the wastewater and Sam is his, the assistant. In case there were any questions that you had regarding, say that an operator would be able to, to answer, you know, better than Stephen or I could answer. So thank you both for being here.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody, and thank you for having me here again. As Henry said, we won't be going through like all the same detail as we did last week, but happy to take questions. One question that came up last week and one that we, I wanted to reiterate again, this work in the Phase Four project is not luxury work, it is necessary work to keep the facility operational and reliable for, for years to come. And it is the last phase in this upgrade that's been going on for some years now. So the idea is, you know, short of regulatory changes, this would be all the work that's necessary for, you know, 15 plus years, short of regular maintenance, which people have to do no matter what. Any questions on the scope or what's included or excluded?
Any questions?
I think all the questions that I had were asked or answered the last time we were here.
All right, thank you. Any members of the public?
Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Commissioner there?
So I had a, there's a couple outstanding questions that I had asked. You know, one was related to Seaford, they had.
Oh, yes.
Right, Seaford, Ocean City, so maybe you could get to those.
Yeah, we'll get to those.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, one thing I really want to reiterate is the bidding process. It was advertised in two newspapers. Stephen and I contact, contacted different contractors that had the capability to do this kind of work and there, there aren't many. It's, you know, heavy industrial, industrial work. So if you look on here, some, the word says unresponsive, these contractors were contracted but didn't ask for the bid, the bid documents. Like say, for example, Adel, I spoke with Adel, they requested the big, the bid documents and they attended the pre, the pre-bid meeting. And the one that Stephen contacted down at the bottom, they actually declined and didn't even want to accept the, you know, take a look at the bid package. So again, there was quite a few contractors, five attended the, the pre-bid meeting and as mentioned, Ronca was the only one that bid. Now, as far as Seaford, I spoke with their public works director and they actually have not started their, their headworks yet. Okay, that's going to go out to bid in a few months, but in a couple years, the estimate of it went up from $8 million to $13 million. So they're expecting it to be more than that. And, and I forgot the, the engineering firm that they work with, but they were saying that what they've seen in is smaller projects, there's a fair large amount of interest, but larger, more complex projects, there seems to be less interest in the, in the entire area. And Stephen can talk some, some more about that.
Yeah, no, you did ask me to follow up on the Ocean City bid, which I, which I did to the extent that I could, and I've got a couple of other anecdotes to share as well. So for Ocean City, just to confirm, there were two bidders, Michael F. Ronca and Sons, who were the low bidder here for Rehoboth Beach, they were the low bidder for Ocean City as well. The second bidder, Johnson Construction Company, was one that we had contacted, they took the documents from us, but declined to attend the pre-bid, pre-bid meeting or, or put a bid in. There was no published estimate, so I can't, I can't speak to how that compared to budget or not. I did speak with Ronca's chief estimator, just to ask a couple of questions about his experiences, and he shared two. There was another bid opening at a similar time in Pennsylvania, they came second. The bids, bids were something in the order of 125 to 130 million. And that was something like 50, 60% over the published estimate for that project. And another one, and I won't disclose the location for the second, a month ago, they were in the progress, process of putting bids together and they noticed one of their competitors put in a question to the owner, which I'll, I'll read. The question went, this is another potential bidder, a question to the owner in that location. After looking through the drawings, it appears to me your budget is too low. What kind of financing have you secured? And can the owner move forward if the job is over budget by a substantial amount, you know, in the order of 50%? So there are anecdotes, you know, there's, there's, there could be other anecdotes, but they're two that were shared by Ronca's estimator and the best information I have here. Yeah. Okay. So, good to move on. You know, the next slide we had was to do with bid comparison, acknowledging that the bid was certainly higher than we're anticipating. Last week, I mentioned a few things. One is the idea that when we, a project like this with a lot of, where it's not so much big process equipment, but construction work and commodity work, you know, our estimates, you know, have to come from historical data, as current as we can make it, but it's still historical data and pricing. Whereas a contractor's pricing, their sources are different. It's, it's what the vendors, material suppliers are quoting right now. There's different, different data available. And when we were, I just shared some of the reflections I've had since, since the bid opening, you know, some of the factors that I could attribute difference to. One is, as Henry said, you know, in this space, this size project, this type of work, contractors are busy, they're not, they're not aggressive at the moment. It is hard to find labor in, in this area right now. There's been inflationary pressure for a long time. You know, particularly electrical equipment, a lot of commodity materials, costs just stay high and get higher. The tariff dynamics are, are something that, you know, it's hard to say what the impact of that was. And we acknowledge that just the location, there's, there's a premium to it, you know, little bit to do with the congestion in the area in the summer, but also that the very real constraints there are on doing some work at the plant during certain periods of the year. So all this, you know, will have contributed to this difference. There was a question, you know, someone did ask me last week about the, the line item, the one in, in white, there's RAS pumps and piping, fiber loop receiving station. It was lump sum bid item A6 on the bid form. Someone asked, is there some more detail we could have to understand the difference, 11.9 to the 4.7? In the time available, Ronca couldn't price out, you know, the work in, in what we call PS1, the rad recycled and waste sludge pumping station. When I was looking at my notes, I, I would project there's, there's probably a few million dollars in that, that area. But they didn't have the time to, to cut out the different pieces to put together in that number for this process. Because, just, just to clarify that, you know, their pricing is built on inputs from different vendors, different subcontractors, and their pricing wouldn't be broken up that way either. So to go and kind of contact each one, get out the right portion, it's a difficult exercise. But some numbers I could find, which, which wasn't the number asked for, but it was really the best I could offer in, in this time. From the total, from the, from the lump sum items, which I think came to 20.8 million. Five million of that was electrical and controls equipment. There was a million dollars in architectural materials like doors, windows, casework, things like that. There was a million dollars in HVAC equipment. And then around half a million dollars each in, in bypass pumping, demolition, paving, roofing, piles. In all, there was about 8.3 million dollars in subcontracted work and the rest would be self-performed by the contractor. So there's, there's some, some information which may or may not be helpful, but that was just something else to, to help understand what's in it.
Commissioners, have any questions? Remember, this is not the first time we're hearing it all, but.
That was going to be my question, is there anything different this week over the last two weeks ago?
No, no, yeah, it was nearly two weeks ago.
Just want to torture us again?
Well, no, we can move quicker. There we go, Henry.
I'd like to ask for a, a motion from the commissioners, do you have any fine point that you need to make?
No, I was just going to go over the last slide, but after, about the cost and the Rehoboth share is roughly under 8 million for it. And my last slide was to request board action to award the contract.
Mayor? All right. Go ahead.
If I may make a motion to award the bid to Michael F. Ronca and Sons Contractor for Phase Four Upgrade to the Rehoboth Beach Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $21,341,000.
I second it. We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders. I'll do it during discussion, is that all right? Motion to award bid to Ronca and Sons Contractors for the Phase Four Upgrade of the Rehoboth Beach Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $211,341,000. Before we, I ask for a vote, is there any members of the public that would like to comment? Nope. Yeah, bring it back to the table here. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, and the motion carries. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is consider membership appointments. I think we can do this fairly quickly unless you have any questions. There are agenda item reports made by each of the chairs of their respective committees. Each one, of course, starts off with themselves as chair of the committee and then each one, each chair has eight proposed members. Mark distributed resumes by hard copy, Mark, Craig didn't, so if you have any questions, you can certainly contact him at your leisure. And you, you chairs want to say anything?
Should we call the names into record?
You can do that.
Do it very quickly.
So.
Mayor, if I may make a motion?
Yeah, we're just.
Move right along, that's fine.
I mean, we have these support documents, they're in the agenda. Go ahead, Patrick.
Yes, Mayor, if I may make a motion to approve those individuals listed in the embedded documents outlining the proposed Streets and Safety Advisory Committee members appointed for a term not to exceed one year.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to approve the two slates of proposed members for the two new advisory committees. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor. If not, all those in favor signify... Did I go to the public? I don't know. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. And the motion carries. You now have membership on your two committees. Congratulations. With that, I want, would like to entertain a motion to appoint Christopher Galani as Commissioner Liaison to the Rehoboth Beach Historical Society.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to appoint Christopher Galani as Commissioner Liaison to the Rehoboth Beach Historical Society. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. And the motion carries. With that, we're going to our last bit of new business, discussing considering ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Section 16 of the Municipal Code relating to compensation rules for callback pay. Jean Lee, head of HR, is that right?
Yep. Okay, so this is to amend ordinance, Chapter 46, Section 16, compensation rules in our code. This is part of what came out of us putting together a new employee handbook. Currently, our code has a minimum pay of time and a half or four hours for employees that are called back to work. A lot of things have changed over time since this code became effective. We have a lot of things we can do through technology now. So a callback might not mean you actually have to come back to town. Maybe you're sitting in your living room doing a half hour of work, not actually driving all the way in here. This has gone through the employees, the department heads, the employee committee. They, nobody had any heartburn or worries about this. They all understand why we would want to do something like this. So we want to cut it, keep the four hour minimum if you physically have to come back to work. But add part of the code that if you are doing it remotely, it's a two hour minimum. Obviously, if you do more than that, you get paid for what you actually do.
So you're looking for a motion to...
Mayor? If I may make a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Personnel, Section 16, compensation rules of the Municipal Code of the City of Rehoboth Beach relating to callback pay.
I have a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Thier to amend Chapter 46, Section 16 of the code to update the callback pay policy by establishing a separate minimum pay rate for remote callbacks. Is there any comments by the public? If not, back up here. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you, Jean. With that, our next bit of business is future agenda topics. Couple things, a reminder that don't forget you can always send future agenda topics directly to Taylor, Evan, myself, or Lisa. And we'll take a look at them. But remember, these are to be put in the workshop and the regular meeting agendas, not special meeting agendas. I did not, I overlooked putting support documents in this agenda, and that's why you got a hard copy with you today. However, after consulting with Evan, we thought, for now, one, we will only embed these documents in the workshop meetings. That's all right, rather than both. Any comments? Any...
So we're just going to discuss this in the workshop meeting?
No, it would still be on both agendas, but we were thinking of just...
Staff would update it once a month.
Or as appropriate.
Correct.
That's fine. We, I mean, off cycle, we all agree that we want to add something, you'll just add it off cycle.
For sure.
I just wanted to...
Well, remember...
Just let me finish with this, I think you appreciate that. Just want it to be current, right? So if a commissioner or a citizen, sorry.
It should be current. So if we all agree to change something, and a commissioner or resident goes and looks at it, they're looking at the most current version.
Oh, sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
That's fine. Are there any comments today?
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Gossett?
For, going forward, if possible, I'd like the investigation by the city manager to add additional information to this in the sense that when this article went on the calendar, that it originated. And then also if they could assign any priority to this. I know we've done this with CIP in the past. Again, I turned to Evan. There was a qualification of names or numbers, but that we have some idea of where these fall into priorities and how they need to be dealt with with regards to timing perhaps of publicity or advertisements or budgetary restrictions or where it would fall into budgets, but giving us some indication of how these topics would be managed. Thank you.
Mike, no, thank you, thank you. Put that away. Our next on our agenda, review future meeting dates, Monday, November 10th, 9:00 AM is a workshop. 2 o'clock PM is a special meeting so that we can conduct two bits of business. And then following that will be a FOIA ethics seminar. That's on the November 10th. With that, we'll go to citizen comment.
Mayor, could I? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Thier?
On the FOIA ethics, have you thought about inviting members of the new committees? Okay, great, thank you, thank you, thank you.
My question, Mayor, is what time would it be so that we can let our committees know?
I have to look that up. I think, I think we were going with 2 o'clock.
You said 2 o'clock, a special meeting.
For the special meeting. Yeah, so it would be afterwards. How long is our first set of business going to be? I don't know.
Well, maybe we do it, though.
Yeah.
Flip it, yeah.
If we have people sitting here.
Well, I'll send you all a memo.
Okay, great, great, thank you.
Give you enough time. Thank you very much. Now, citizen comment. This is for topics that are not on the agenda. Hoyt, if you'd come to the front microphone, please.
Thank you. I'm struggling to get three minutes, but I'm going to try. You might think this is about communication. A few days ago, I sat down with the mayor, and we spoke about agenda management and communication. Prior to that, I had sent emails to the city manager and several other commissioners with varying degrees of responsiveness about the same issues. At a BOC meeting in September, I expressed my frustrations about communicating with the Board of Commissioners. I submitted a memo on the subject to you and at the meeting and asked that it be distributed to each person. The mayor requested an electronic copy at our meeting the other day, and I subsequently provided that to him. Essentially, my memo described my inability to get an official response when I communicate with the Board of Commissioners. Typically, I correspond in writing, such as my two recent code change suggestions. If I'm lucky, I'll get a note back from one or more of the commissioners. Otherwise, my messages go into a black hole. Similarly, it seems even more unfair when citizens take the time and trouble to appear before the Board of Commissioners at meetings to express their concerns, opinions, and raise questions and get no response or even the possibility of a future reply. Public expression is limited to comments, quote unquote, no longer than three minutes. I'm trying. I will note that our meeting, excuse me, that meeting with the mayor expressed his opinion or at least his openness to considering how the Board of Commissioners and citizens might engage in some form of Q and A. Unless communications, written or oral, are about a specific agenda item, there is no established procedure at the Board of Commissioners meetings or otherwise for officially addressing, responding, or even acknowledging receipt of written or other forms of communication from citizens. At our meeting with the mayor, he conceded that there isn't any policy or procedure. But communications is not the subject. Actually, I'm here to offer my suggestion for a future agenda topic. And if you look at that agenda topic section of the agenda, future, excuse me, of the Agenda Report policy that was just issued, and at our meeting with the mayor, I discussed this excerpt, and I'm going to just read the excerpt because it serves my purposes. It reads, "This will allow members of the public to raise subjects they believe should be addressed at a future meeting." Well, I didn't get that opportunity, so I'm using it now during the comments. So actually, what I would like to do is to propose that the subject of speeding in neighborhoods, neighborhood streets, all right, I'm almost there, be added to the list of future agenda items. For several years, I have raised concerns about this problem. And at the appropriate time, I will be prepared to, again, offer specific information and details concerning the issue. I will note that I believe there is support from at least one commissioner, whom I'm aware had some success promoting the concept in one neighborhood in the city. I would appreciate some form of acknowledgement or response, official or otherwise, to my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Hoyt. I'll respond right away. I think that there's something that I would forward to the Street and Safety Committee.
I was going to make a comment. Hoyt, our first meeting is on the 13th of November, and I'll send you a reminder. We'd love to have you there. That's our first safety meeting.
Oh, is it?
That's going to be something that we'll be talking about for sure.
All right, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Hoyt. Anybody else, Howard? No, all righty, all righty. Thank you very much. Thank you, Hoyt. Commissioner announcements, comments? That's it. We have, the next, we have an executive session for the purpose of discussing the content of documents excluded from the definition of public record in 29 Del C, Section 10,004B6. Could I entertain a motion to go into executive session? If you would, read the entirety of that agenda topic. There you go.
I hope you're getting overtime.
...to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the content of documents excluded from the definition of public record in Del 29C, Section 10004B6.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing content of documents excluded from the definition of public record in 29 Del C, Section 10,004B6. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. We, my little preface before we leave is that we're going to relocate to the caucus room. The duration of our meeting is unknown. No actions will be taken. Or we will return here into public session. And again, no actions will be taken, and then we will adjourn from this meeting. Thank you very much. All right. I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session back into public session.
Don't move.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Patrick Gossett, a second by Commissioner Thier to come out of executive session back into public session. All those in favor, signify